All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Order of Business, September 27th, 2022, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Madam Clerk, can please take your call?
Yes, Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Hassan Ahmad is absent. Mo Beedoon.
Here.
Nancy Brier.
Here.
Robert Coniston. Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Next up, for our Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to have that led by our Chief, please.
To the flagrant of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief Hart. Next up on the agenda is item number three, Agenda Approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Beedoon.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the amended agenda of the regular meeting on September 27th, 2022, as submitted.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Beedoon, supported by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Tom Wenzel, go ahead.
Um, I know when, if I want to get something on the agenda, I have to have it in one week before the meeting, the Tuesday by noon. And this was presented to us today at some time today. I checked my email at about 3:00. Is there, is there a timeframe on how far or the time you can put something on the agenda?
Okay, so as a...
This is a...
Oh, okay.
It's right here.
Okay, so as a count, as you are aware, Councilman, anything that goes on the agenda goes and starts with the Council Chair. I was contacted by a city representative, specifically the city engineer, Ali Deeb, later yesterday, and he asked to have this added on. Well, it is specifically, and he's going to go ahead and present the specifics of it. I asked him to do kind of a short presentation on it, as far as the specifics of it. But what he's been trying to do is try to, trying to find a contractor or contractors, I should say, to be able to fix the different roads that we have where they have issues with roads. Now, we're not talking about replacing whole roads. We're talking about different slabs that are either broken, missing, need repairs, et cetera, et cetera. He put it out for a contract, found a contract, and I'm giving you just a general outline of it. He found and we agreed and approved a contractor for South, for the Van Born Telegraph, Annapolis, Dartmouth area, and he was looking for another contractor for the rest, the other parts of the city, and he was able to finally put it together. The concern is, the biggest concern was getting material. That's where a lot of contractors could not bid or submit bids on the job. But he's finally put enough together. So he asked me to put this one on as kind of a last-second basis. The primary reason is this. If it is not approved, if we don't pick a contractor today, then it's kicked another two weeks. And the problem is with a lot of these contractors, now they're on, behind the eight ball, and they won't be able to get us in for this season. Therefore, we'd be pushed back until next spring, and that's something he was trying to avoid. With that being the case, he gave us the bids. There's still the contract, the formal contract that needs to be signed by obviously administration and then us approving it as a city council. But that's what he's bringing forward right now. He will give us a synopsis. Now, with the fact that it's a thick packet, I did go through the packet, printed it out, so somebody owes me a lot of money. But anyways, I didn't realize it was going to be that many pages. But most of it is just a specific, the part that's new is maybe the first two, three pages. The rest of it is mostly the specifications. I'm seeing somebody give me a thumbs up. Michael, can you hear us? Good. So most of it, the rest, after the first two, three pages, is just the specifications that Wade Trim put together for the different contractors when they make bids, and it's the same specifications that have been used for many years on different contractors. It's not really necessarily stuff that we add, approve, subtract from. Although we can, we typically don't, and that's the same specifications that we're giving, given with, why am I thinking Hard Rock? It's not Hard Rock. What's it called? Is it Hard Rock?
We currently have Hard Rock.
Hard Rock? Is it Hard Rock? Yeah. Okay, so I do have the right name. With Hard Rock. So it's primarily the first three pages, and he will, he will be addressing this specifically himself.
I'm just curious why, why you gave this, why we even got this.
So I asked the...
Yeah, we don't have time to go through it.
I get it. I get it. I totally get it. But for full transparency, I asked the Clerk's Office to send this to all the council members, just in the event somebody wanted to look up something or a specific page. But again, these are the same ones that we have all gone through them in the past. It's specifications, it is not, there's nothing changed on that. It's the same specifications that they put out so that contractors can put bids. So that part has not changed. But I asked the Clerk's Office, and honestly, I, I kind of, I was putting on the brakes, putting on the gas. I don't know if I should send it or not because it may get a little confusing, but it's just the specifications that they always put out for bids.
So what are we, are we going to be voting to approve this tonight?
No. What we're going to be voting on tonight is we have four bids from four different contractors. We'll have a short presentation from Mr. Ali Deeb, because this was added on kind of last second. Once he gives us a short presentation, of course, if all council members are comfortable, we'd vote on one, pick one, and then from there, the contract, which would be the same contract, I already had a conversation with Mr. Deeb, he'll go into a little more in depth. It's the same contract that we approved with Hard Rock. The only thing that will be changed would be the name Hard Rock, and it depends on which particular company we pick, the specific numbers. But again, Mr. Deeb will be, who has been working on it himself in administration, will be giving us a little more specific. I just wanted to give you a general outline.
Okay, um, knowing Director Deeb, well, like I do, I, I'm going to give him the benefit of the doubt on this and, and, you know, not object to having this on the agenda and listen to his presentation because I, you know, he's one of the people I trust the most in the administration.
And, and obviously, he's done things right and well and saved the city. I don't know the exact number. I guess I'd need a finance person that's much smarter than I am, but tons of money over the year, in the last year or so, by voting, having to go out to other private companies and, and where, as you know and I know, we're paying a lot of money for. So I know he has the city's best interest at heart, and, and I've gone through it, and I personally am comfortable making a vote tonight. But again, if you don't feel comfortable, then, you know, that's, that's up to you.
But this, this is, this is legal to do this at this, at this hour, to give this to us?
Correct. So again, it's at the discretion, so, yes.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So it's at the discretion of the Council Chair when something's added on. And the criteria that I use in general is just, you know, obviously, as much common sense as I'm, I have. When something's presented to me last second, and I've already told all parties and administration to not give us stuff last second, because I don't like it last second, just like you don't like it last second. I get that. But every once in a while, you'll have something where it's time-sensitive, has to be put on kind of late. And one of the other reasons I try to avoid, and not only us as council members, but I'm cognizant of the fact that obviously the Clerk's Office has got to do a lot of work to put this on last second, and I recognize that. And I know I'm putting them in a awkward position where they, they got to say yes, but I know they don't like it. I, I know. Trust me, I get it. But again, the alternative to this would have been the possibility of not getting a contractor, and then we'd be going through the winter season with much rougher, well, we already have rough roads, but unfortunately, it would go into a rougher situation. So I felt it is a good idea to put this on now versus waiting another two weeks and not have a contract.
Council Chair, can I just add on a couple of things?
Councilman, go ahead.
Thank you. And I know I had a conversation with Mr. Deeb and, you know, with, with a lot of other municipalities having ARPA money, it was very, very hard with, when it comes to negotiating with different contractors that were going out to do the concrete, doing the asphalt. And you also have to keep in time with the timeframe that we have. You're no longer going to be able to pour in the next month or a half or two months. So there really is a short timeframe here. When I, when I brought this, this was brought up, I, you know, I gave Mr. Deeb a call. I wasn't so happy with it, but I understand because I know that there are a bunch of residents, a bunch of business owners that have been reaching out to the city, but we don't have a contract in place, so therefore, nothing has been, has been done. And nothing's been fixed. So that was one of the reasons. I was a little bit, you know, upset that this was brought towards us just today. But, you know, we know that there's tough decisions that we have to make, and this is one of them, so.
And I want to add something on that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, and as being Mr. Deeb, I know so he's somebody that truly cares and puts his best foot forward. So knowing that it's him and his integrity, I definitely support this here.
Yeah. I, I do want to add something on the ARPA money. So I, I had a conversation with Mr. Deeb in regards to this. So because of a lot of ARPA money, which is federal money that came in to multiple cities because of COVID, so like in our city, for example, it's 24.3 million, if I'm not mistaken. So since a lot of cities have a lot of money available to them, there's a high demand on a lot of these contractors, and therefore, they're much more picky as far as who they work for. So I'm, I'm glad that he got us...
And they're, and they're out bidding. They're, they're spending more money. Somebody that has $80 million out of, out of a different municipality is going to this contract and is saying, well, if the city's going to pay you $200,000, I'll give you $300,000. And Dearborn Heights doesn't have anybody. So that's what Dearborn Heights is facing today.
Right. Thank you. Councilman, go ahead.
Yeah, and well put. So all the cities, the counties have gotten large sums of money, all for infrastructure work. So, and I worked in this cement business years ago. It's a whole different ballgame regarding contracts. And we, we, if we're going to get somebody, we better get them quick.
Council Chair. Thank you. Councilman, go ahead.
For the record, I wish our clerk makes sure that Robert Constance is here. Councilman Constance. For the record.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Hearing none. Motion made by Councilman Beedoon, seconded by Councilman Muscat. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Number four. Councilman Beedoon.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 13th, 2022, as outlined in 4A.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Beedoon, supported by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is public hearing and comments on agenda items only. And again, for those in the audience, it's on agenda items only. You will have two minutes. Please state your name, city, and... Anybody in the audience? Okay, seeing none. Then we'll go, Madam Clerk, anybody on Zoom?
No hands up.
Okay, no public comments on agenda items. Thank you very much. Next up is fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve current claims 6-1 through 66 as submitted.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat and supported by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 7A, and this is one from, that we were discussing a little bit earlier, from city engineer, Ali Deeb. Bid award, street pavement repair program contract.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for street pavement repair program contract to Angels Cement Company as the lowest bidder for the total contract amount of $1,059,967.50. Funds, funds for this will be drawn from Major Streets GL account number 202 dash zero, or excuse me, 202, 202 dash 880.550. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants on behalf of the city in a treasure to issue payment. Furthermore, authorize a corporation council to prepare a contract and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city as outlined in 7A.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat and supported by Councilman Coniston. Before we go into a discussion, because I'm sure Mr. Deeb's short presentation will probably answer a lot of our questions, so before I do that, Mr. Deeb, I'd ask you, if you don't mind, if you could give us a one, two-minute, just general summary, some of the things I talked to you on the phone about, and so we can make sure all the council members are aware. Go ahead.
Uh-uh, he froze up. Opportunity, and thank you for, for the...
Wait. Hold on, Mr. Deeb, we can't hear you. Sorry enough, your microphone, something?
Well, my microphone is on.
Okay, a little bit, okay. A little bit better now.
Can I get it closer? How about now?
Yeah, a little bit better. I think, Stan, if maybe you could somehow raise the volume here inside the auditorium, please? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Deeb.
Okay, so back to Council Chair again for, for the vote of confidence. I, I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments regarding this project. This has been a challenging year for, for construction, as we're all aware. Competing demand on, on our, with ARPA money. Communities, state, federal, and, and, and county, as well as cities, are all competing for the same pool. So as a result, contractors are not committing, you know, to a large project.
Okay. Wait, hold on. Mr. Deeb, you cut off after a project, so please repeat whatever you said.
So many projects are competing for the same pool, for the same contractors, as well as suppliers. So the challenge we were facing this entire season was, we have demand, we have the money, we just don't have the pool of contractors. So if you recall, a few weeks back, we awarded the contract, had the work, to Hard Rock Construction. And, and that was after many discussions, they didn't want to commit for more. Again, because of the time of year, the availability of labor and material. So this particular company, we had to negotiate suppliers to make sure that there is enough concrete supplies to facilitate the work we were trying to do. So the, the process we did, we divided the work in the city into two sec...
One second. You stopped at two sections. By the way, I'm sorry, give me a sec. For those in the audience on Zoom, unfortunately, this is a situation according to our IT director. It's more of a problem from Zoom than it is from our end. But Mr. Deeb, NIT is still working on it with Zoom, so hopefully it gets us corrected soon. But you said something too, and then you got cut off.
So we divided the work, the pavement work in the city. This is sectional work. So basically, these are the sections of pavement that were rated red throughout the city, both north and south throughout the city. So we divided the work and gave the contractors what, what they can accommodate within, you know, the current labor market. So we awarded the first half to Hard Rock Construction two weeks ago. And then we were looking very actively to find a contractor to, to finish the rest of the city. And we were able to secure commitment from, from suppliers, because it wouldn't do me any good to award the contract if, if material is not available. And we are competing in this market with a lot of cities and counties and states on, well, commitment, but a commitment nevertheless, to provide the needed material for that portion of the work to take place. And this contract will cover the, I wouldn't want to say the north part, but Michigan Avenue North with all the pavement sections that we determined. So there's about 10,000, 11,000 square yard. It is a unit price contract, so meaning that we will pay for what we get done. So it's not a lump sum contract, it's a unit price contract, it's broken down per yard, all-inclusive. So we will launch that contract closely, and we will pay for what we get done. And then furthermore, the, the actual contract itself is, is a mirror image of the construction contract we've used with other companies, i.e. Hard Rock. So it, it, it's just a different company, and that is because Hard Rock or others couldn't commit to the entire city. That's why we had to break it in half.
Actually, that's one of the questions I was going to ask you in regards to Hard Rock. Being such a major company, why didn't they just bid on the whole city?
Sir, even, even the 10,000 that we gave them was, was still too much. It's just too much. They had too much work. It, it's just that there is so much work taking place. There's only so much you can do.
Okay.
I would love to give it to them.
Okay, couple of questions I had for you. Number one, that when I spoke with you, you mentioned that there, this particular company, one of the companies that, that you have recommended has done work in Dearborn. You mentioned you were pretty comfortable with their price, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The other question I have is, one of the concerns is, no matter who we give it to, we won't have the contract in front of us to formally approve it. Now, you mentioned to me this is the same contract as Hard Rock, and I get that. And, and that's fine. Hard Rock will be, the word, I'm sorry, the new name, whoever it is that's selected, will be put in there, and the new numbers, whatever they are, will be put in there. But I would still feel, and I know you got to go through, obviously, corporation council, but I would still feel comfortable with the city council. I don't want to delay you, but I'm just giving you my personal opinion. Once the contract's completed, maybe send it to us, and I don't know if maybe in a motion we could put, put in that type of an addendum or amend, amendment, to say that once the contract's completed, it is to be sent to all the council members. And unless there's an objection from council members within, we could pick 24 or 48 hours, then it would go ahead and go through, because I, I still feel that council members should have an opportunity to be able to look over the contract. Even though you say it's the same, and I trust you and I know, but I think that would be, in my opinion, the right way to go.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Any other comments from council members?
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel, go ahead.
Yeah, um, thank you. Director Deeb, just so I get this straight, we've already awarded half this contract to Hard Rock, and this is for the second half that you divided up to go into Angels or?
No. We awarded half the city's, uh, street repairs to Hard Rock, and this is the other half. So it's not the half contract. We broke the work and help so contractors can accommodate us. That's what we did.
Okay. Now, between the two companies, how the price compares per square foot on comparable work? The work being done, how's, how's the prices compare?
Actually, this company is a little cheaper.
A little cheaper?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from council members? Okay. Hearing done. We'll go ahead and, well, I'm sorry?
Did you want to amend that?
That's what I was just going to ask. So the one that made the motion was Councilman Muscat. Actually, let's just have a short discussion on this. Me, myself personally, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, I would like to see this subject to, once the contract's completed, it is sent to the council members. We have, unless, unless there's an objection through the council chair from any of the council members on the contract that's sent over to us within 24 hours, then the, the administration's authorized to go ahead and continue with the, with the contract. And I just want to give the council members at least an opportunity to view it. Even though it's the same as Hard Rock, even though it's, that's the only thing that's changing is the name and the price, but again, for transparency purposes, I want people to at least have an opportunity to look it over. Are you guys comfortable with that amendment?
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I, I think that may be illegal, because first of all, 24 hours is not enough. 48 hours would be a little better, but that's just, that's just like voting by proxy on, and I don't think that's legal. You know, it, it's just, it's not right, personally. So I, I will say no to that part, because I feel it's illegal. Now, if Corporation Council has something to say about the legalities of it, I may change my mind.
Yeah, I don't think... Corporation Council.
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue whether it's illegal or not.
I'm sorry, speaking to your microphone, sorry.
It's whether it's sufficient time for you to review the contract. If you guys say we need 24, we can do it in 24 hours, that's not illegal.
Are you comfortable with 72?
I think you're right in what you're saying. Pick a, a timeframe that's comfortable to everybody, and we would like a chance also. Corp. Council would like a chance to review this contract.
No, no, no. My comment, Corporation Council would be, after you have approved it, you and administration are good with the contract just for transparency purposes only. Even though it's the same contract as, as previously, I want to give an opportunity for the council members, for those that want to look at it, show it, somebody do whatever they want to do, just in the event there's an objection, then we'll go ahead and, and work on the objection. If there is no objection, then you can move forward. Are you guys comfortable with 72 hours?
I'm, I'm comfortable with 48 hours after Corporation Council sees it.
And approves it, okay.
But I don't know if anybody else has any other comments.
Uh, Councilman Coniston, you had a comment?
Uh, yeah, only that, and the city attorney is correct. What we might do is vote on the approving the contract subject to the final review by the city attorney and by the, you know, the mayor and council, subject to, you know, in other words, a go-on effect unless, I don't know about putting in, you know, subject to any objections or anything, but just subject to the final review.
Well, here's the thing. See, if, if it's not, okay, if you, if you make it just subject to review of the Corporation Council, then technically, they can put whatever they want on there, and we have no say-so as a, as a council body. I'm saying I want it, once Corporation Council, administration have approved the terms, which should be the same, and it's sent over to us, we'll have, I'm comfortable with 72 hours. If Mr. Deeb, are you comfortable with 72 hours? I mean, is that...
Actually, all I want, all I want to know is that if we're unable to proceed to construction in a timely manner because of the time of year that we're in, it, it, you know, it defies the whole purpose behind rushing this project through. Because we're really, we, we need to, you know, we have a lot of work. We have 10,000 square yards of concrete that needs to be done before winter. So if I'm unable to issue in order to proceed at this point, this whole, we may not be able to do it. That's what I'm afraid of. The weather is changing. I, I need, you know, so before, once we approve the contract, we still have to do Ms. Dig to screen the area, to make sure that there's no underground utilities. So, I mean, we have a lot of work after approval, which I can't start until you guys approve it. So if, I, I don't mind doing whatever you want, I just don't want this project to delay.
Well, but, but here's the thing, Mr. Deeb, it would not delay anything, if you think about it. So you're still going to go through the same process as you were going to do, right? Initially, when I spoke with you by phone, you said the same contract as Hard Rock, and it just, that, and the numbers are changing. Fine. With that being the case, provided you go through the process hypothetically, let's say you're ready, I'm just going to throw a day out, you're ready by Thursday, then the only thing this would, or by Friday, or by, let's say, let's say Monday, you're ready by Monday on your end, right? The only thing this would delay you would be potentially 48 hours, or maybe if we go with 72 hours, and that's it. If no council members have objections, which, you know, arguably, more likely, there should be no objections, because if it's the same contract, with just the numbers that we're approving now, and the name we're approving now, then more likely, more than likely, there should be, or there probably will not be objections. If there isn't any, then that should only delay you for anything, two days.
Council Chair.
Okay, Councilman Muscat?
Uh, I think if we have an objection, you could call an emergency meeting.
I have no problem with that.
Of this council to come in and vote. That way, we'll have a vote of the council and let it lie there.
Yeah.
Okay? And I am ready to make a, amend the motion, but Councilmen, they do need to say so.
Sure. I just don't want, my, my only objective, uh, council members is, I just don't want to delay where we lose out, like Mr. Deeb said, where, then they can't do the job. Councilman Beedoon, go ahead.
Council Chair, I'm going to tell you, I, you know, looking at this, what we have here, I don't even see why we would need to amend this. I, I get, I understand for complete transparency, but if anything here is going to delay, even in, in the small case of 48 to 72 hours, I'd rather not do that. I, I don't mind where we're voting, what we're voting on. I think that Mr. Deeb is somebody that, one, has been being hounded by a lot of business owners and people across the city, so that if I have to go ahead and make a vote on this today, I'm okay with it. Truly am.
Council Chair. Councilman.
Just briefly, and we lawyers will...
And then after, we got to wrap it up.
Make it more complicated than it is, but, um, yeah, to echo what Councilman Beedoon said, we vote on it, and number one, we don't maybe have the expertise really to see anything, but number two, it's, this is what is used before and recommended by our city engineer, Ali Deeb.
Yeah, and you have Corporation Council that's, I mean, at the end of the day, is
Yeah, and you have Corporation Council that's, I mean, at the end of the day, is gonna be working for the best of the interests of the city. He's got fiduciary duty to us.
Thank you, Mo. And I assumed incorrectly that he, the city attorney had not reviewed it yet, so that was mine.
No, yeah, yeah, he's not reviewed it.
I have not reviewed the first contract.
Right.
But we'll-
Correct.
Sorry, I mean, I, I respect-
Council Chair?
You guys, but I, if we can make a vote on this today, I know we've been focusing on this and we worked as a team to say that we're gonna move, it's, it's up to you guys. I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow in the lead, but that's where I think we should stand.
We will be voting on this. The only issue that I'm adding is, we should see the contract. Councilman Wenzel, was that you?
Yeah, yeah, real, real, thank you. Real quickly, um, uh, to those of the audience, Ms. Dig is a company that checks for underground utilities and areas that we work on. And I don't, I, I don't think that should delay Ms. Dig because we know where we're gonna work, but anyway, I got one quick question for the director. Um, Angel Cement, are you comfortable, they've done this type of work before and the amount of work and the timeframe that we expect them to do it and the manpower?
Yes, sir. So, so I checked before we, before I made the recommendations, they were just finishing up Dearborn. Um, and, and that's, that's, you know, they were the main saw on all the work, sectioning work in Dearborn. So they're just moving them to Dearborn Heights.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so council members, um, you know, there's some of you that want to not look at it, just accept Corporation Council. I, for one, would like to at least have the opportunity for any council members that want. You wanna make it just 48 hours?
Council Chair?
And if nobody makes an objection, then it continues forward.
Council Chair?
Correct, Councilman.
I'd like to amend the, uh, motion, uh, as stated before, with the addition of subject to review by Corporation Council and 48 hours after his viewing be viewed by council. And if any council members do not want it, a special meeting will be held to vote on it.
Okay.
And then the special meeting will be following, the first day following the 48 hours.
Correct. No problem. Okay, sounds good. So motion made by Councilman Muscat.
I need a support on that.
Support.
Okay, motion made, okay, so support by Councilman Constan, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported again by Councilman Constan. Any other discussion on that?
Council Chair, before you vote on it, I just want, for clarification, who's going to forward that contract to you for review? Should it come to us and then we forward it to you? Or directly, we need to know who's going to do that?
I, for one, would like everything to always start at the clerk's office. So I'd like the Corporation Council to send it to the clerk's office and then you just send it to me.
Then we'll keep the timeline on it.
You'd send it to everybody, yeah. I, I think just for formality, it's always best to start with the clerk's office.
Thank you.
Well, that would, Corporation Council, right? Okay, good, thank you. So, all in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item A B, uh, reports from Mayor.
Council Chair?
Councilman Bedun?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointment.
Sorry, I, I apologize. On the motion, there was the wrong letter, so A A, I apologize. A A, please go ahead.
Council Chair, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointment of one of our favorites. Mrs. Madison McDonald to the Community and Cultural Relations Commission, one of the greatest commissions. Uh, term to expire in March of 2024. This appointment is to replace one of our very own Zunia Bezi as outlined in A A.
Motion made by Councilman Bedun, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair?
Councilman Bedun, go ahead.
I want to first, uh, turn my head over to the mayor and thank you for this appointment here of Mrs. Uh, Madison. She's definitely a rising star. I'm so sorry, did I say Mrs. Madison? Yes.
It's Miss.
I'm sorry, Ms. Madison, forgive me. So sorry, guys. And truly, uh, a, a rising star and thank you again also to Latanya Gird, who goes above and beyond for this commission, truly. While, uh, there's been so many ins and outs in this commission, you continue to take the, you know, the right foot forward and, and really, we thank you for everything that you do for this commission. And I know that Ms. Madison is gonna do a great job and with the support of this administration and the support of this council, I look forward to continuing to be working hand in hand with you guys.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Um, I have a question for the mayor, as I always do on this type of stuff. So, um, I see Ms. Madison here and I'm sure she'll do a great job. But nevertheless, I would like to have, um, although it's at the discretion of the mayor, I would like to have a little bit of information on the person. So give me your thought process behind selecting Ms. Madison or appointing. Okay, so we got the Latanya approval and Leslie approval, that's good enough for me. Okay, thank you. Any other comments from council members? Okay, hearing none. Uh, motion made by Councilman Bedun and seconded by Councilwoman Brier. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carried. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It's her father's first time coming out to any type of function too, so we're gonna recognize him tonight.
Alright.
Get to work.
Alright. Next item on the agenda is item A B, uh, Star International Academy Homecoming Parade.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move that Star International Academy has requested permission to hold their homecoming parade on Friday, October 7th, 2022 at 11:00 AM, uh, staging to begin at 10:00 AM. Police Chief Hart and Fire Chief Brogan have approved the routes and will provide any services they may require, uh, as outlined in A B.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat and supported by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9A. This is from C E D D Director, uh, Jamal, Senior Citizen Eligibility Status.
Council Chair?
Councilwoman Brier, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the designation of 55 years old as a city senior citizen status as a base for eligibility to provide federally funded city programs and projects when applicable, as outlined in 9A.
Support.
Okay, uh, motion made by Councilwoman Brier and supported by Councilman Constan. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, for, um, Director Jamal, can you give me a little bit of, just a, you know, quick explanations to the total thought process behind this? Wait, hold on, you're muted. Still muted.
You're still muted.
Okay, go ahead.
About now?
Yep, that's better.
Alright, so I'm just certifying the practice, uh, which Dearborn Heights been doing for, for centuries. Uh, it just, we needed to be certified by, uh, your highness's, uh, you know, Jan Hankan approval, so we have it already, that's all.
Okay.
All the programs right now, uh, are 55 years old. Uh, that includes the senior services that provided by the, uh, Recreation Department. I tried to find a trace, uh, couldn't find any, uh, including asking, uh, Director Lawrence L. Uh, so, uh, it's something that we choose to do and I talked to you about it, uh,
Okay.
and that's just, uh, routine, um, a routine approval, there's no thought. If I wanna change it now to 60, it's gonna be a disaster because all our programs in the city are 55 years old.
No, getting additional funds, I'm good with that. Thank you very much, Director, appreciate it. Okay, so again, uh, motion made by Councilwoman, Councilman Constan.
No.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Brier and seconded by Councilman Constan. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9B. This is D P W Director Conrad, um, 2022, uh, fiscal year, I'm sorry, F 250 with plow price increase.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the payment increase of $4,470 for the 2022 F 250 with plow, originally authorized by City Council Motion 21 dash 449. This amount will be paid from capital outlay account number 101 dash 265 dash 981 point 000, out, as outlined in 9B.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat and supported by Councilman Constan. Any discussion on that? Okay, I had a quick question I'm gonna ask the Chief of Staff, because I know, uh, Director Conrad is on vacation. The only confusing, um, Director, oh, Chief, I'm sorry, if you don't mind, thank you.
Which Chief?
No, Chief of Staff.
Oh, okay.
Mariana.
There's two Chiefs there.
So when I spoke with, I spoke with Director, uh, Conrad a little bit about this thing. The only thing that was, that, I, I can't digest in my head, it says, there was a price increase from 44,885 to 49,292, an increase of $4,407. I, I do recognize, of course, cars, trucks, et cetera, have gone up in price. Only thing that threw me off is, there is a price increase, but yet the city has taken delivery of the vehicle already. And I thought it was kind of a little odd because there was no approval of the additional 4,407.
Thank you. Um, yes, the way that it was explained to me is that every time that we purchase an item from my deal, you agree to the current price. These vehicles typically take about a year to get, um, furnished. So the delivery may be at a different price point than when it was originally ordered and you don't pay for them until they are delivered, which is what happened now.
So you pre-agree ahead of time that whatever the price is when it comes out, even though you pre-agreed ahead of time at the 44,885, you'd have to go with the whatever new price it is?
Yes, because it's what the state bid is.
Okay. I got a question. It, it seems like it would be capped somehow, but-
Well, Council Chair, you know, with the chip shortage, uh, that was one of the biggest issues. Uh, typically, we don't have an issue with the price, they usually maintain the price. But because of the chip, uh, shortages, uh, a lot of cars, their prices has gone up by, I mean, a huge amount.
Okay, well, the one, the part I was clarifying, the part I was thrown off by, in my mind, I thought that would come back to council for approval because it's a higher amount. But from what you're telling me, Chief of Staff, and this is, Robert Conrad told me any questions to ask you, that's why I'm asking you. You, from, the way I'm understanding it from you is, if the price changes, we pre-agree ahead of time, a year ago, and whatever the price is at the time of delivery, that's what it is, right? Okay.
I'm comfortable.
Council Chair?
And my, and my question could be, say that this was the night today, would we send the vehicle back?
Again, that's a con, uh, contract that you agree upon when you agree on the my deal bids. Because again, they are statewide bids, so you're not gonna get a better price than that. That's why my deal is there. It is supposed to be the best prices for government. So you're kind of agreeing on that contract that my deal provides to, to all of the government agencies.
I love it. Thank you so much.
Council Chair?
Councilman?
I, I too had an issue with that and I contacted the mayor's office along with Mr. Conrad and it was explained to me and I was referred to back to the original contract, which I looked and it's exactly how they explained it and, uh, so it's a little tough to swallow, but that's what we agreed to. And I guess maybe we have to be a little bit more diligent the next time, but thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mariana. Appreciate it. So, back to the motion.
Councilman? Yes, Councilman Muscat's got a nice haircut.
What's that?
Got a nice new haircut, huh?
Been a couple of weeks now since I had it.
It looks good, thank you.
So, motion made by the good-looking haircut guy, uh, Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Constan. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9C, and this is with D P W Director Conrad Stump Grinding Services.
Council Chair?
Council Chair? Okay, let's give this one to Councilman Constan.
Yep, go for it.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Department of Public Works Highway Department to con, to contract stump grinding services from Gray's Outdoor Services LLC for the removal of 97 stumps at $250 each for a total cost of $24,250. In addition, approve the future removal of up to another 28 stumps at $250 each. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the warrants upon receipt in the treasure to issue payment out of account number 101 dash 440 dash 818 dot 000, as outlined in 9C.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constan, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion on that? Council Chair? Yes, Councilman Bedun.
I'm so sorry, but I know in the past when, uh, we would see these, we would get addresses and everything of the homes, of the trees that were chopped with, with the stumps. Um, I didn't see that this time.
So, I, I presume that we will get that once we're gonna be making payment?
Yeah, that's approving, approving the war-
The fund transfers.
Okay.
We still have to submit the council with individual homes that we, uh, we grow.
But I also, I, I appreciate on the administration council chair and, and doing this, I know that, uh, there's been a lot of trees that have been trimmed and then there are a bunch of stumps that are just laying around and people have called in. I've received several phone calls, I'm sure a lot of this body has as well. But hey, one of them had to come out there and, you know, remove my stump and put a new tree, so, thank you for that initiative.
Yes, thank you. Um, any other discussion on that?
Council Chair?
Yes, Councilman?
Thank you. Um, I know the director's not here, so maybe, uh, Mariana could answer that question. Why are you walking up there? Now, and, you know, I said, I seen lots of stumps that need to be ground, some are little tiny ones too, but some are large. So I guess they could take the good with the bad with this deal. But what about the, the, um, the stump grinding removal, the, the debris that's left over? Whose, whose obligation is that to remove that, the pile of chipped up wood?
D P W.
That's our obligation, so they don't have to remove it, they just grind it and then we have to put topsoil down and seed it?
Correct. From what I understand, that is, uh, the contract that we currently have. So just so you know, we, we do have a contract right now with Dearborn Tree, uh, for a lot of our tree cuttings. Um, but again, there is so much work and our city has so many trees that we're falling behind. So we need assistance with more of the stump grinding area, which are the ones that have been delayed for quite a little bit now. Um, so that is why this is, um, being recommended to you at the moment.
Was, was looking in- Correction, with, with the bid that's being recommended, the first bid includes them removing the chips.
Yes.
The second bid gives you the option as a council, if we go with that particular company, we have, it's more money, but one of them is without removing the chips, one of them's with. It depends on which one we pick.
Yeah.
Let's remove the chips.
Well, look at the, the back of, what was the price for, the, the two, the two prices for removing them and leaving them?
Uh, you got $58,575. This is with the second company. Uh, that's with the debris being left at the site. And then the second option, this is with the second company again, was 184,000. And this is again for 100 stumps and that's what the debris is being removed from the site. The first option, which is one that he's recommending, and I spoke with Director Conrad on this, is Gray's Outdoor Services and they're charging $250 per stump, which is drastically cheaper. Um, and it includes removing the chips.
Wow, that's expensive.
Comes out $250, $250 per household, basically, or per tree.
So three times as much to remove the chips, it looks like.
Yes.
Yeah.
For the other, for, for the second company.
Second company, not, not that, right?
Not the one he's recommending. And then, and then in addition to that, $250 per stump for future removals. Okay. For, for those in the audience that are not familiar with this or on Zoom, um, it's two different companies that, you know, there's a company that takes, cuts down the tree and there's a whole different company that comes in and does the stumps.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussions on that? Hearing none. Motion made by Councilman Constan and seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Uh, with no other further discussion, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 13A, Business License Renewal, uh, Wes Financial Auto Group.
Council Chair?
Councilman Constan?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council renew the business license for Wes Financial Auto Group located at 5952 North Telegraph, as outlined in 13A. Support.
Motion made by Councilman Constan, seconded by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair?
Uh, yes, Councilman Wenzel.
Have, have we had, have any reports on, on, uh, their water bill or have they had any violations?
In the packet, it says everything is zeroed out.
Zeroed out? There are no issues with ordinance violations?
And not what it says on the paper, so.
Got our paperwork right on it.
Okay. Now, are we, are we enforcing the double parking on these car lots? Like, I mean, do you know that?
So in, in general, when a, a renewal of a business application comes through to us, we are given, uh, information from the administration and most specifically the clerk's office, if they are behind on property taxes, if they are behind on water bills and if there's any other delinquent personal property taxes on the property. If there's any major issues as far as ordinance is concerned, in the past, ordinance department has come through and said, you know, ahead of time, hey, you know, this particular company, you know, X Y Z, you know, they've got a lot of, we've had a lot of problems with them with whatever it happens to be, then it's at our discretion.
So you have, you're not aware of any?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I, I, if you're mentioning that particular company specifically, I can tell you, um, driving by, um, their particular used car lot, which I drive by a lot consistently. I mean, these guys are, are the example to a lot of other, um, uh, you know, used car lots. I mean, it's thick and span at a whole nother level. And, and the cars, actually, I almost laugh when I drive by there because the cars are lined up. It'd have to be like an engineer, I mean that in a respectful way, Mayor. It'd have to be an engineer to put these cars together. They're like, it seems like they measure to the centimeter to make sure that they're in the right row. So from what I see, they do things right. I've never personally heard of any problem.
Alright, thank you.
No problem? So, motion made by Councilman Constan, I'm sorry, where's the next one? Councilman Constan, seconded by Councilman Bedun. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is members of the public. Uh, first up is comments from council members.
Council Chair?
Councilman Wenzel.
Thank you, Council Chair. Uh, first of all, I'd like to congratulate, uh, Mrs. McDonald. Is that how you pronounce your name, McDonald? Okay, thank you. Okay, okay. Congratulations, good luck, and we hope you stay on a long time. Um, secondly, I want to thank, um, our Wayne County Commissioner, David Kinesik. He's been doing a lot of work around the city, uh, not himself, but getting things done. Uh, Down Beach Daily recently is a big, uh, big change there and working on that. And he's a lifelong Dearborn Heights resident, a great guy and loves the city and he's doing everything he can for us and my hat's off to him. Also, uh, the Dearborn Heights District 7 Dad's Club Flag Football Program is underway right now. They're still taking registration. You can call area code 313-701-2833, 701-2833, to register, uh, boys and girls for football and cheerleading. And, um, one of my things I like to do is talk about fam- And one of my things I like to do is talk about families, and we had a great family event this past Friday at Swabka Park at the Richard A. Young Center, the outdoor movie night, probably the best crowd we had in all the movie nights. Great, great turnout. Everyone had a great time. My hat's off to the Dearborn Heights Parks and Recreation Department, and the Dearborn Heights Dad's Club. Now, there's one thing that I've been getting, I'm sure everybody's getting a lot of calls on this event that took place at the Warren Valley Golf Course. Very, I've seen some video on it, I wasn't there myself, very disturbing. I've got several questions on there. I mean, the promoter of this event stated that he secured the park, the facility. We don't even have a CFO on this facility yet. Who's the liability for this event? There was, it got out of control. There was spinouts and drag racing in the streets. I was told that the police department wasn't informed on this. We actually had to call in two neighboring cities' police departments on this to calm things down. I mean, who's paying for the police on this? The liability is my main thing. I mean, that parking lot's supposedly in bad condition, and you've got people running around the parking lot. How much money did the city make on this? Was it rented out to this individual or this entity? It was, the video, if anyone wants to see it, get ahold of me, I'll show it to, it was like some of those things you see downtown Detroit down the expressway, where these people just go wild. They showed a long video I seen, and at the beginning, it was very nice. The cars were on display, but as the evening went on and the sun went down, it got way out of hand. And I don't know who, the mayor or the police chief, who to answer these questions. I mean, did we rent this facility to this company to use this, use that property?
Counselor Chair.
Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, so there was a grand opening across the street from Warren Valley. It was a detail shop, they do window tinting and also vehicle wrap. And so, for the grand opening, they put on social media, they're doing a grand opening, and I guess they got a lot of followers. A lot of people showed up, you know, to support this new business in Dearborn Heights. This business was located in another city, but the owner, actually, they live in Dearborn Heights, they wanted to support the city of Dearborn Heights. They moved the business to Dearborn Heights. So we did the grand opening, and a lot of people showed up, and I was there for the grand opening, for the shop, it's on Warren, across the street from Warren Valley. It was, excuse me, I'm talking.
Sir, please, nobody talk to me, audience.
So, it started, it was, when I was there, it was very, very quiet, very peaceful. And so we did the grand opening, I left, and when I heard the issue, I actually called the owner the next day and asked him what happened. Obviously, you know, nobody from the city was there. So I was talking to the owner, he mentioned that a lot of people showed up, and there was a group of people that actually showed up from another city. They're a takeover group, and they go to auto shows or whatever shows that they have, and they try to discredit, you know, whatever's going on. So the minute that that group showed up, the first, I think, couple vehicles, I was told, then right away, the owner of the new business called the police and told them that they need their help to get people out, and that's, and right away, the owner of that business shut things down. They called the police, and the police came in, and they, basically, they guarded the traffic out of the parking lot. I can't remember the time, but it was, I believe it was about like 8:30, 8, 8:30 PM.
Okay. I know it wasn't a city event. Because honestly, I'd gotten some calls from residents on this, and honestly, I had no idea about the event, so I know it wasn't nothing with.
Yeah, it was not a city event, it was a grand opening, that a lot of people showed up to support this business. And like I said, when I was there, it was peaceful, then, you know, that some people showed up late, and I think they're called takeover group, and they just started, you know, doing stupid stuff. And right away, the owner of that business called the police to shut it down ASAP, because that's not what they wanted.
Okay. Counselor Chair.
Counselor.
There was an advertisement put out, and it said that they, it was going to be, they secured the facility at the Warren Valley Golf Course.
I'm not aware of it, so that's something, I can't, are you asking a question, or?
No, I'm saying that this was something that, I don't, if it was the owner that put this out, but someone put a statement out that said that.
Again, there was a grand opening, they had, they had the, there's no parking on, there's not enough parking on his side of the street, so they don't want people to park in the residential areas. They told people to walk, park across the street at Warren Valley Parking Lot. I mean, you got Riverside, they park also at Warren Valley. They don't ask for permission from anybody to park over there, so.
But the thing, the thing is, okay.
I just want to make sure, I don't want you guys talking over each other, so it's just, you all set, Mayor? Okay, go ahead.
Well, the thing is, is the video I saw was early on, and it was a car show in the parking lot. It wasn't just parking, people were partying in the parking lot, they had their show in their cars, they had their hoods up. And it was, this was already, this is well before dark time. So that parking lot was used for a car show, right off the bat. I mean, if that was the case, I mean, we should have had, I mean, police cars hopefully drive by there all the time, they seen people having an illegal event. I mean, this is uncalled for. I'm not, you know, this, we don't need this kind of stuff. I mean, if it's from someone outside the city, we need to patrol our city better, not let these people in. If it's someone inside the city, we can't, you know, we can't just, you know, shoot from the hip here and do things, you know, on the whim. No, no one, I didn't know anything about this big car show. I've got friends that drive those kind of crazy little cars, loud cars, and they didn't know anything about it. It wasn't publicized as a car show there. And I just, I mean, I know every one of us up here got bombarded by calls and emails and texts and everything, and it's something that, it's just something our city doesn't need, that's not the reputation we need in Dearborn Heights, that type of thing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from council members? Counselor Muscat?
I too am kind of dismayed at what happened at Warren Valley Golf Course, and with that, I think we should install some gates at Warren Valley, because it is a big parking lot, like the same gates that Riverside and Crest would have, to open and close and keep them locked. And if we also turn the lights on in the parking lot, we need to turn the lights on, because it's like, it's pitch black there. And God knows what people do, I mean, we've already had people breaking into the golf course, getting onto the course, and damage was done. So my suggestion would be putting up some gates, locking it, and having the concessionaire have a key, and the city have a key, and then everybody else will have to come to the city to use that facility. And we closed Parkland Park down, and so there's no reason why we don't close this down. That's one. And if, bear with me, please, Counselor Chair. Speaking of Parkland Park, that's a park that doesn't generate any money for this city, zero, zero money. And we pay a dollar to rent this from the county. I think we should break that $1 lease with the county and utilize our resources that we do. All we do there is cut grass. That's all we do, and that's a lot of grass to cut. We can utilize those workers in that time to do some of the work that the residents need, the services for the residents, either, you know, be in tree trimming, or cutting trees, or, you know, having the street sweepers out. So, that's another thing, and, you know, usually I could write emails to everybody about this, but I don't want to be in a violation of Open Meetings Act of sending all my council members the same email, because I don't want anybody to think that I'm trying to deliberate and discuss things via emails. So that is one that I'd like for the council, city council, to look at. I also want to bring up the food truck issue, and remind everybody that no matter, I know we have an ordinance, but if you want to use your food truck, you still have to come in and get your license. Don't forget to get, you just can't show up in an event and put up a food truck without getting your license. That's another thing. And a while back, at least six months ago, if not longer, I asked our corporation council to look at, given, looking at the planning commission rules that bypass the city council on all their findings, that city council is not voting on and approving. You know, planning commission is a commission of people that's just appointed, and I think this body here, being elected and have the rights to the citizen, to the citizens, we need to be involved in under those decision makings. They have nobody to answer to. We're the, we're the body that has to answer to the general public. So I believe that anything that the planning commission approves needs to come to us for our final approval, okay? So I wanted that to be looked at, I never got anything from our previous corporation council. The other thing is, I know Mr. Conrad isn't here, and people want street sweeping a schedule so they know when the street sweeper's coming. There is no schedule. I know it's supposed to be done on trash pickup days, but there is no schedule. We need to have the schedule. I also contacted our DPW Director on multiple times about street work that was done on Oakland Drive. After we spent millions of dollars on a CSO project there, one of the utilities companies came there and dug up a hole, and all they did was fill it up with the black asphalt. And it's, number one, it's unsightly, and eventually that's going to break down, and we spent millions of dollars on streets. They need to come out and fix that properly. It should not go to the city to fix. Those utility companies need to come back and fix it. It's been a few years now, so I don't want to hear that, oh, they're waiting till they get all their work done. It's been a number of years now. Oakland Drive, it's, I have the address at home, I've given it to the director, I'd like to see that get done. And the other thing I have is, what is happening with the car wash site that was approved by the planning commission? I see the work is being started, they're clearing out, and what, I want to make sure the infrastructure is proper for that car wash. Those two streets there flood, the infrastructure floods real a lot as soon as it rains. And I don't want to have another thing like we had on Ford Road, where after they built the strip mall, they came back and said the sewers were too small to accommodate that, and then the taxpayers were on a hook to replace the sewers and make them larger. I don't want that to happen. If that infrastructure is not capable of handling that car wash, let them fix the sewer systems. I'm not going to, and I'm hoping my council members do not approve anything that comes through again, because the infrastructure needs to be upgraded for a business. They want to plant the business, let them upgrade the system, because it comes out of our, our water funds. Our water bills are high enough without that happening. And does anybody know what's going on on Inkster Road? Is it going to be repaved or not? Because I see all the barrels and all the markings, and we haven't heard anything of what's going on between Ford Road and going down to Westland. Does anyone know?
Counselor Chair.
Good.
Well, I want to address one of the, correction to Councilman Muscat, the city, the taxpayers did not pay for the improvement for the sewers.
Yes, we did.
No, no, no. Counselor Chair, I mean, Councilman Muscat, I was in a meeting, we talked with the city engineer. They actually, the business that actually opened just west of John Daly, the whole strip mall, the owner of the plaza ended up paying a significant amount. Mr. Deeb's online, he can also chime in, because we had attorneys, we had a meeting, and he paid for it out of his own pocket. The only thing that the city paid is for a small tab from the end of his, the strip mall to John Daly.
It was the Amboy, I thought it was Amboy.
John Daly.
We shouldn't have had to pay for any of that. It was sufficient before they came and built the business.
Okay.
They should, they should pick up the whole tab. That's what I want to try to avoid. It's sufficient now, but if it's not sufficient after they build, that's not the taxpayers' problem.
Okay, Counselor Chair.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. The business owner, when it was rezoned, the previous administration, they never looked at the infrastructure, obviously, and the sewer system for the current, for the location. So they wanted to go off of Ford Road. So, when we had a meeting, Mr. Deeb actually stopped the project. He said, you cannot put any more taps on Ford Road. If you put any more taps on Ford Road, you're going to flood all the homes south of Ford Road. So instead, the owner actually paid out of his own pocket over a hundred-something thousand dollars, in addition, just to go ahead and just reroute the storm or the drain just south of his property. So it was not the taxpayers, it was actually that amount, 100, I believe it was 150,000, I don't, Mr. Deeb can correct me on that.
Okay.
So anything happens now, we don't have a consultant looking at these things. We have Mr. Deeb, our city engineer, that actually looks at these projects, and that, for that reason. Because the previous project was, we pay a lot of money for the previous consultant to actually approve the rezoning and everything. So now, we go through our city engineer for everything. Everything that goes through, it has to go through him for his approval. And in fact, we had a meeting just a few days ago, he's going to get a stamp to make sure that any, anything that gets submitted, that he has to have a stamp before it goes through, and they offer any permit to any business owner, even residents, if it's a big project.
So, if I may, Counselor Chair, and I'll, Mr. Deeb can comment on this. So if the empty lots behind that business, the new business coming in, they want to build a house, are they going to be able to build a house without having any infrastructure problems?
No. Can I?
Pardon, Mr. Deeb. Pardon, Mr. Deeb.
Okay. So, just so, as the mayor indicated, part of our process now, before permits are issued, or even before the lots were divided, to be able to build on them, we had an infrastructure review to accommodate, to make sure that these lots can be served. As we all know, the car wash is taking place.
Wait, so Deeb got cut off from, as we all know?
So, the location where the car wash is taking place used to have a single structure, and that was a church. So when the lots were even considered for construction, we had a full utility review conducted, and I supplied the recommended solutions for infrastructure, including sanitary, to be put in, and we supplied that to the developer and to the building department. So that is already done months ago. And that same proposed infrastructure will serve the new car wash. So it is, it is, it's already been done, the design is already completed and supplied to the consultants. So we're not repeating the issues that took place in the past. We are looking at infrastructure before developments take place on every project, and we have a process in place now. We're even looking at a proposal now, early in infancy stage, to develop on Amboy and Ford, that the single house is going to commercial. And we're doing the exact same thing. We're doing full review of the infrastructure, we're doing reviews of transportation issues before we issue permits. So the process is already in place, we're not going to repeat the past issue utilities, Councilman Muscat, for the car wash, it's already been looked at, the design is done, we're just looking at implementation as part of the construction. So that'll be taken care of.
I want to make sure that you know, you're aware, that when it rains, both of those streets flood from Ford Road up, up past the few, first few houses on the street, I mean, standing water for a long time.
Okay, so that's storm, that's not sanitary.
Well, I understand that, but you're still going to have issues with all of that. And that's what I'm afraid of, and then later on, it's going to come back to the city council that we have to approve this or that. I'm totally against that. What's 100%. Just want to let everybody know how I feel about that, right now.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor.
I'm sorry, next up is Councilman Conston, go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Chair. Lots of new businesses opening up in our city. Our city's growing. I'm a great believer in buying Dearborn Heights grocery stores, restaurants. Our population is growing.
restaurants. Um, our population is growing, but the speeders are still a problem. Uh, the crimes, some uh, gun violence crime in Dearborn Heights is of course a problem. I too got calls about um, the event at um, Warren Valley. And my only comments are uh, number one, it was a large crowd. Number two, um, it is city owned. No one uh, knew what event was going on there. There was no, I got calls, you know, what is happening? And then uh, there was some more than uh, bad driving, uh, bad behavior following this event. So um, if it were at uh, a high school parking lot or something, it would be different. But it was at Warren Valley. I understand there were food trucks there, and if there were, we have a permit process. But um, I would have just appreciated for one thing, a little more notice about what was going on, what was planned about the event, uh, and to find out, um, you know, what what happened, how did the crowd get out of hand and so forth. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Bedu.
Thank you so much, Council Chair. And I just want to also welcome our new corporation council. I know that you've taken on this job for the last almost thirty days here. And I thank you for working alongside with us. And there's one thing that's always been on most of our minds, and I think Councilman Muscat really brought this up today. Uh, the food truck ordinance was put before us a couple of times. I know we were supposed to have a study session. I'm sure it's something that you've reviewed. Uh, it's something that I've been passionate. I believe Councilman Dave Abdullah has been passionate and Councilman uh, uh, Muscat has been extremely passionate. All of us have, but I think this is something that the city is really wanting. And um, I know the former corporation council was working on it, and I haven't heard anything ever since.
So I, do you want to give them an update on that? So I I contacted the corporation council on this and asked that um, an ordinance be put in place in regards to the food trucks. And most specifically, one of the challenges that we've had is with the forty-five days is people are applying for a food truck uh, permit, getting their stuff together from day one, let's say. They finally get the okay, let's say twenty days later, and then they only have about two, three, four weeks, and then their permit is over. And then they have to come back to the clerks and have the clerk's office and the building department do stuff twice. Do, do it twice within the forty-five days. So I asked them to do an extension on this for a hundred and eighty days. Um, but our corporation council, Roger, also recommended that he look over the ordinance and put together the ordinance. And I've been working with them back and while we're doing that. We've been working on it back and forth, uh, trying to have them put it together, and then it'll be brought forward to council body. But then uh, Madam Clerk recommended, and I approved it based on her recommendation, to make sure that we set up some sort of a meeting with the building department, clerk's office, which I've already spoken with both. I spoke with the building department and clerk's office, but any other uh, potential departments, like the fire department, police department, et cetera. With that being the case, I took it off of the agenda. It was supposed to be coming to the agenda this week, today. And our corporation council, Roger, had it prepared and ready, but it was a real thick packet. I didn't think it was an emergency anymore. So based on the Lynn's recommendation, my thought process, and Roger's recommendation, I bumped it off to probably two weeks later, so we can have an opportunity to speak with others. Anything to add on that?
Yeah, we just added some more due diligence provisions within the language. I know you guys did a hard, very hard, good job putting it together. I looked at some other cities. I sort of separated the motive vehicle from the vendor. I want to make sure that it's um, that it's non, non-transferable when you have it. Make sure that the trucks have the proper insurance and coverage, liability coverage, um, that it follows the Wayne County Health Department. Language I didn't see in it, but we've inserted it already. So now we're just going to pull the department heads together, go over my draft with um, the mayor and uh, our chair, uh, and the city clerk, and get their input into it. There's a couple of the departments. And to follow, and then which ones would be exceptions? If there's a, if a truck comes in fifteen minutes and leaves, like an ice cream truck or something like that, we have to have provisions for all of that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So it is definitely moving forward.
Okay. And then the last thing here, I just want to give some recognition to a police officer in the city of Dearborn Heights. I don't remember his last name, but his first name is Danny. He's got red hair. Uh, maybe the chief can tell me his last name so I can.
Danny Dellen.
Danny Dellen. Uh, thank you, Chief. And and you know, Danny, the other day I had a business owner call me and said that some of their employers were leaving work late at night. They were about sixteen, seventeen year olds. And they called the police department, and Danny waited. And I believe Danny works night shift. And so now I, on a regular, whenever he has time, he'll swing by as he sees these individuals walking out. And when I talk about true community policing, uh, Danny, if he's at home and he's watching this, that was amazing, Chief. Thank you for that. Uh, Danny really, really, you know, this was a regular resident that called me and said, uh, this, this officer went above and beyond. And he, anytime he has a shot to be, to be in the area, he drives by and he watches these fifteen and sixteen year olds walk out. So thank you to our Dearborn Heights Police Department. That's, you know, that's truly what matters out there to us. And uh, everybody else, have a great night.
Thank you. Um, any other council members with a comment?
I have an announcement.
Okay.
We're ready.
Let's, yeah, it's way on, on the, on the announcement part, just to make sure. Any other council members? Just uh, since, just a quick shout out to Sheila in the water department. Uh, I had a resident call me, some of this, and specifically pointed her out that she gave her great customer service, explained things in regards to her water bill, the issues she was having with her water bill. Um, and went above and beyond and gave great customer service. So Sheila, good job as usual. Okay, uh, next up, we're going to have announcements from administration and any other announcements. We'll have Councilman Breyer.
All right.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. I haven't changed. I I want to announce that this Saturday, October first, our main firehouse on Beach Daly, the firehouse, fire department will be having an open house. And that's from eleven to two PM, and all are welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And for those that have not taken their kids there to the open house at the fire department, uh, my kids are grown now, but for many, many, many years, I took my kids when they were younger. Eventually, I'll take my granddaughter, which is a little older. And and I tell you, they used to have a blast there.
Where's this at?
Uh, at the fire department.
On Beach Daly, the main.
Yeah.
If you have kids, take them there. It's really fun event.
Council Chair. You're using your kids as an excuse for all the fun.
Oh, I had fun. I had fun. I had fun.
You should have seen Councilman watching the line scheme. He was having a lot of fun this last weekend.
You lost all.
Help me, Mike.
You're digging yourself a grave, you know that, Councilman.
You will no longer be called on to, to, to make comments.
Okay.
Any other announcements? Uh, I see two more. Uh, Fire Chief Dave Brogan, go ahead, please. I'm sorry.
Council. Uh, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I just wanted to uh, to piggyback on that. We are having our open houses this Saturday. Um, it's going to be a great time. As, as you guys all mentioned, it's a great, great for kids to come out and just to, just to meet your firefighters and uh, kind of see what we, what we do on the day to day. And we have some good uh, demonstrations planned, too, that we always do. And we have our East Star team there, our Western Wayne County Hagman team will be there. Um, we always do the extrication where you sit, we use the jaws to, 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 you know, uh, uh, cut cars apart to, to show you how, how we were in a car accident.
You broke up.
There'll be tree trunks.
Sorry, after accident, you, you cut up. How did I become the Zoom police suddenly? I, I didn't sign up for this. But uh, after you said accident, she got cut off. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Oh, that's all right. The, the, the basically, uh, one of the extrication demos that we'll be doing will have a, a large tree, like it's falling on top of a vehicle. And so kind of showing off some of the new equipment we have to kind of stabilize something like that, and how we can work underneath it and safely get someone out of the car in that scenario. So it's going to be a, it's going to be a great event as always, and we hope to see you guys there.
Thank you, Chief. And thank you to the whole department for all the great work they continue to do, keeping us safe. Thank you. Uh, next up is Director Hassan Jamal. Go ahead.
Mayor also.
Can you unmute yourself?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I have an announcement, important announcement. I can read it. The city of Dearborn Heights, Community and Economic Development, in partnership with Hub Detroit Office and Wayne County Health Department, will provide COVID vaccination event as follow. Time and date, Saturday, October fifteenth, eleven to three. Saturday, November fifth, eleven to three also. Location, Beruan Sen- Senior Center, twenty-sixth, one-five-five Richardson Street, Dearborn Heights. Uh, this is, this is COVID vaccination is for, available for age six months and older that include anyone that need first and second uh, boosters. Uh, this is free for everybody. In addition, uh, Beruan Center provides testing and vaccination every uh, Monday and, and uh, every Monday and I think Tuesday, uh, from also eleven to three PM, also free of charge. Actually, Monday and Thursday from eleven to three PM. It's in the north east side uh, block of Beruan Center. The parking lot is across the street. Is walk in, and also somebody can call the mayor's office and register their names.
Okay.
So it will be on the, on the uh, web, website. Uh, I don't want to, I have another comment, but I, I've promised you, I will leave it with the public. So I will speak as a public.
Okay. Thank you, Director Jamal. Any other announcements? Let me have the ladies first. Come on up, Latanya. Sorry, Mayor.
It's okay.
Ladies Trump, Mayor.
You can always go first.
Oh, ladies always first.
Latanya, remember my phone number?
We can talk about that later. Good evening, everyone. Uh, good evening to City Council, to our Honorable Mayor, to City Administration, and to the public. I am Latanya Gator, CCRC Chairperson. And on behalf of the CCRC, we would like to wish our Jewish community members a happy Rosh Hashanah. Um, that Jewish New Year holiday began on this past Monday and it ends today. So again, we wish you a happy Jewish New Year. We also wish our Hispanic community members a happy Hispanic Heritage Month. Um, we are celebrating both of those holidays and cultural moments via our Facebook pages and on our Instagram page. Definitely want to say congratulations to Madison McDonnell on her recent appointment to the CCRC. And finally, I am happy to announce that the CCRC agreed to attend a DEI training with a strict focus on managing microaggressions. We took it a step further, and we thought it would be a great idea to invite our honorable City Council team. Uh, they have accepted that invite. So thank you to this team for that. That session, study session, will be held on October the eighteenth from six to seven-thirty. JMG Connects will be facilitating that training virtually, but we will be meeting here because it is a public study session. Thank you again to the City Council and the City Administration for allowing that to happen. Thank you to the CCRC for putting forth that idea and following through on it. And lastly, thank you to the Department of Parks and Recreation for footing the bill and booking us for that training. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question.
Yes, Councilman Muscat.
Hey, did you send us an email about this?
I sent it to Council Chair.
I approved it for a study session.
Yeah, okay. So you're going to be.
You'll be getting noticed.
Can I be happy to resend anything?
Well, he has it. He'll be sending it to I, because I know I didn't get it. I'm saying I missed something here.
Yeah. So we send the study sessions, um, announcements through the clerk's office the Thursday before the council meeting. So you'll be getting it.
Okay. I just didn't want, make sure I didn't miss something.
I was premature, but I was so excited. Okay. Any questions for anyone? All right. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Latanya.
You're welcome.
Next up, we're going to go one more time, ladies, and we'll come back to you, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Out of a vinyl.
Should have been born a woman.
Lynn Senya, City Clerk, Dearborn Heights.
Zip code, please.
Four-eight-one-two-seven.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. I, I missed, because you speak, are you speaking as a clerk or as a resident?
Lynn Senya, City Clerk, Dearborn Heights.
Go ahead.
Okay. Four-eight-one-two-seven. In addition to football season, it's also election season. We have an election. We're gearing up for the November eighth general gubernatorial election. I just wanted to let you know that the bulk mailing of our absentee ballots for the November eighth general election is being completed on Thursday. We'll be taking them over to uh, the Dearborn Post Office um, through the US Postal Service. Some of you will receive, um, this is typically the return ballot envelope for the absentee ballots. The post office has asked all clerks in the state of Michigan to change it to purple in, in, once your supply is depleted. Well, we're in the middle of that right now. So I just wanted to bring you that attention to our voters. There, um, others will receive the purple one. The Postal Service has required um, clerks statewide to, to deplete their inventory of the green envelopes and to switch to the purple. The reason for that is if anybody has sent their mail certified, guess what color it is?
Green.
It's green. So and to avoid any confusion, they're asking you to, um, to all the clerks to change it to purple. Um, it doesn't mean that we won't get it. It'll still be processed the same way it was. We just want to bring that to your attention. There's no cause, cause for alarm, as all ballots will be handled and counted as safely and securely as usual, no matter which color appears on the envelopes in which they are returned to the clerk's office. For more information to track your ballot, you can go to michigan.gov/vote. We encourage those voters that do want to apply for an application, if they haven't received, haven't applied for an application and want a ballot, they can go. The, the quickest way is to go to michigan.gov/vote. That'll come right into our system. We check our email and process that within twenty-four hours. Um, and get them in as quick as, as possible. We almost have fifty-seven-hundred ballots going out on Thursday. So it's obviously cheaper to mail it, bulk mailing, like by fifty cents a ballot. So it saves us the city money.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, thank you, and thank you for your department. Next up is our mayor. Mayor, go ahead.
Um, I know the chief here is probably going to talk about, we had two police officers actually got sworn in today. But uh, one of the things also, uh, I was talking to Chief Brogan today, with the last, you know, few months, we had two bad incidents in Dearborn Heights that involves youth, uh, I mean infants, uh, ingesting vitamins or, or medication. Uh, very, uh, it's very tragic. So I just want to make sure, uh, let the residents know, if you have any uh, children in, at home, make sure you keep uh, any, any medication uh, away from children. And uh, these kids, for some reason, I don't know, they can open these uh, tamper-proof uh, medication or vitamins. But we had two bad situations, one just uh, the other day. So uh, and it was two months old. So please, uh, just uh, make sure if you have children, grandchildren, uh, keep them away from any type of medication, even vitamins. That's a very, it's not good.
Thank you, Mayor, and deep condolences to the families. Um, Mayor, you mentioned chief had some, want to announce?
Yeah, the two police officers that got sworn in today would.
Uh, did you, you have an announcement? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that we did swear in uh, two new police officers today. Amy Kittle, who's been a dispatcher with us for a few years now, put herself through the academy and uh, was sworn in today by uh, Clerk Senya as a uh, police officer here in Dearborn Heights. And we also had uh, Abraham Uza, who previously worked at the airport for the airport police, uh, worked in the family business due to the great resignation, came back and worked in the family business for a little while, and really had a calling for law enforcement. So uh, he applied and we went through the whole process, and he completed all of the steps to be a police officer. So we reactivated his license today as a Dearborn Heights police officer.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for the service.
Yep.
Any other announcements from administration?
Yeah, I'm.
I see Bill Deschrouet.
Yes, you have one more.
I just got something to the chief. Okay, quickly, go ahead. And Chief, just um, if we could, I would, yeah, moving forward, if it's, I don't know if it's allowed or not, but if I, if you can counsel, let us inform us on the next. I know there's supposed to be some more swearing in. Uh, I'd love to attend those.
Yeah, and I think that's a very valid point. Uh, there are no processes that are delineated for onboarding people that are formal, that we follow, that lives from administration to administration. So I actually forwarded several documents over to the Human Resources Department within the last couple of days. One of them being yesterday is what is the process and whose responsibility is it to share uh, the swearing in ceremonies? How broad, how far out uh, do we go with that? So and then whose responsibility is it? I'd love to host these at the police department. It's just kind of one of those things that we like to not only bring the family in for a swearing in, but also take them on a tour of the building, kind of introduce the uh, new officer's family to their new uh, blue family, so to speak, uh, and kind of. family, so to speak, uh, and kinda get that, uh, esprit de corps building up. So we're kind of, uh, identifying those processes and who's responsible for, for, for what, so we're working on it.
Thank you.
But apologies if it.
No, no need to apologize, Chief, I know you're busy, it's just, it'd be nice too to be able to recognize them and congratulate them and welcome into our city as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, thank you Chief. Next up is our, uh, Ordnance Director, uh, Bill Dishrun. Bill, please unmute, go ahead.
I think I'm on mute, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, just there, I'm not sure, um, cause my signal, signal's been sketchy tonight, so, uh, thank you Council Chair, and I'm the City Council, uh, Honorable Mayor, and Corporation Council, and members of the office and public. Um, I just wanted to give you a brief update, if that doesn't work out, I will just email it to you, uh, the members of the City Council. So here, here I go. Our department, yourself, the organ sweep, um, on nine-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, for our latest and final sweep, uh, the section of the city that we focused on was the area itself, Fort Rowan, Michigan Avenue, between Angster and Beach Daily Roads. During this portion of the sweep, we issued approximately one hundred dollars in violation to residents in this area. The follow-up inspections in that area may result in tickets being issued, if residents are wish, were issued violations, not from clients. Ordnance has had a markup increase in the number of tickets issued this year as a result of the sweep. In July of twenty-twenty-two, we issued one hundred and seventeen tickets, and August of twenty-twenty-two, we issued one hundred and one tickets with various violations. By contrast, in July of twenty-twenty-one, the organ department issued fifty-five tickets, and in August of twenty-twenty-one, fifty-three tickets issued. Uh, in other news, we have set the hire of full-time organ officer for the Tiffa District in the coming weeks. This is a new full-time position in adding stability and consistency with that officer enforcing that area, should be, uh, should yield good results. Thank you to H R Director Mark Hazle, H R Specialist Cameron Egmit, to get this hiring process expedited, also special thank you to. So, it's ten-nine-one. We appreciate Tiffa's continued support and funding for your full-time position. Also thank you to Mayor Bozzi, as well as City Council for your support in approving the new full-time organ officer during the last budget. We'd also like to advise that the complaint from Mr. Henson from Party Street that, uh, he was in last week, or, I'm sorry, the last council meeting, and he spoke during the public comment section regarding. The issue to the responsible party.
Wait, Director, you got cut off after regarding.
I'm sorry. Uh, I'll just go back to where I left on. I would like to also advise that the complaint from Mr. Henson from Party Street has been addressed. Mr. Henson came to the last council meeting and spoke during the public comment section regarding a flooding issue with his neighbor. Tickets have been issued to the responsible party, and this individual will be scheduled to appear at court. I don't know if you remember Mr. Henson that came into Party Street? Uh, maybe not.
Briefly, yeah.
Uh, oh yeah, he, he came in and spoke last time. I'd also like to mention that, uh, Party Base, I believe, is doing a much better job. The number of complaints that are coming into the organ department has gone down significantly recently. Um, and I'd also like to congratulate the party, they've done a great job for the chili cook-off, it was an outstanding event, uh, great turnout, great cause. And also, uh, congratulations to the new police officers, I was able to attend that swearing in ceremony today, I, they were passing by and I complimented it, so I actually made it down. To the patients, and, uh, we continue to.
Okay. Thank you Director. With no.
For Director.
Uh, Director Dishrun, there's a question for you from Councilman Wenzel, go ahead.
Uh, Director, are you still there?
Uh, yes, Councilman.
I don't know if you're aware or not, we had a situation on Shirley Lane in the last week, um, uh, where someone was writ, uh, sent a letter about a violation that was incorrect, and it led to, uh, a phone call, which was not, uh, turned out not good on either end of the phone line. Do we have something in place to keep this from happening again as far as, you know, writing letters to people accidentally, or, uh, are you aware of this process, uh, this situation, and do you have a way to, to, to keep this from happening again?
Hi, I am, uh, Councilman Watch, uh, I'll give you a call tomorrow, if you want to discuss that matter, I believe it's been resolved. The officer actually went back out, the officer is, uh, part-time officer, um, is, relatively experienced, but he went back, back out, and I think they have issues resolved.
Okay, thank you, I'll talk to you tomorrow, thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you Director. Thank you Director. Okay, next up, we have, uh, public comments. If whoever would like, let's, let's start with whoever's, uh, in the audience first, and we'll go to Zoom next. You'll have three minutes, please state your name, city, and street, please.
Hello, I'm Madison, I live in Dearborn Heights and I live on Edgewood Street. I just wanna thank, um, the Mayor, Mayor Bill Bozzi, and the Council, and the public for my welcoming to the Cultural Commission. This is not the first commission I am on.
Yeah.
For anybody that wanted to know, um, I work on the Wayne County Youth Commission, I sit under David Kinesik as his, the, as his youth commissioner. Um, I've, I'm going on my second term with that, so I'm a little bit experienced in that field. I just wanna thank you all for welcoming me, this is very big. I moved to Dearborn Heights in two thousand and nineteen, I believe, and the city has welcomed me with open arms, and I just wanna say thank you to everybody in this community and in the school district, uh, District Seven as well.
Thank you.
Thank you also much.
I, I can tell you, I love your passion, I love that, that's great. Next up, come on up.
Good evening, Rachel Appoint, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, first off, I'm so glad Madison's on the C C R C, she's so awesome, she has such a credit to D seven, she's still in high school, like, I, I can't even express how proud I am of her and I barely even know her. So, um, a couple other things, the chili cook-off, amazing, thank you to the firefighters for such a great event, my kids had a blast, and it's sometimes hard dragging them to things, so, good job again, guys. Um, uh, Councilwoman Muscat mentioned Parkland, I feel like nobody knows about that park, and the firefighters have their chili cook-off there, I didn't even know the city had that park until last year when I went to the cook-off the first time. So, I think it doesn't make money because nobody knows about it. I think if more people knew about it, knew the options for renting things there, I mean, I lived in the city my whole life, didn't know it existed, um, cause I'm on the south end and I guess it was more of a north end thing, I don't know. I love that the D E I session that the C C R C is coordinating is gonna be a public study session, I really hope that other residents that are interested in the topic are able to come or watch, um, afterwards, cause I know we all can benefit from learning more about how to be more inclusive, um, and, and to kind of address our own little microaggressions that we, we all kinda do all the time. Were there ordinance sweeps in every part of the city? Was one question I had, um, cause I know we mentioned that that was south of Ford Road and Michigan Avenue. And I know the south end got covered, but.
Yeah, I, I know of different north end areas, I've had calls from different residents, including my neighborhood, I received a letter, so yes.
And, and they did happen, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
They've been doing them, yes.
Um, and then, um, the event at Warren Valley, um, the ad is on Instagram, and it did say that the event was done, um, in collaboration with the city of Dearborn Heights. So, I'm not sure who was collaborating with this event to put it on from the city, but they were saying that it was the city, so that's probably why you guys are getting so many calls, because the advertisement said that the city was putting it on. And that it was permitted by the city, so that, that was in the ad. Um, and then my husband had a question, um, and since he couldn't make it, cause he's home doing the wonderful dad jobs, um, he noticed several times that the garbage collection trucks are out before seven A M. on our street. Um, and he's aware that it is a contract violation, that they're not supposed to start until after seven A M., I'm assuming because of our noise ordinances. How does the city track those, do we report those, because there are fines in the contract for that. And if we're not enforcing that, that's money that we could be saving or getting. Um, and that's it, have a great night, thanks.
Thank you very much. Next up, please. Come on up ma'am.
This may go off, I can't get it to stop.
Let me see that.
It won't reset.
I got you.
You can try it, but it won't reset.
I'm sorry, one quick second ma'am.
Sorry.
Ready?
You get it, you turned it off. Now you, now you gotta hold them.
Okay, let's, let's use your phone for right now, I was figuring.
There you go.
Go ahead ma'am.
Oh, there you go.
Bring it here.
I got it.
Go ahead ma'am.
Okay, well, my name is Sue and I live on Party, and after all this positive stuff, I have something really negative. Our water main broke a couple, two, three weeks ago, and it ran all night like, night, all night gushing mud into our street, and we had at least two inches of mud in our street. Nobody came to clean it, and the water main wasn't fixed, they came up and dug it again. So after it dried up, there was dust, it was a dust ball, a total dust ball in our street. Nobody came. This was two or three weeks ago. So I called Tuesday and asked if they could come, and she said, she didn't know if it would be today, but I said Tuesday is our garbage day and nobody will be parked in the street, so it's the ideal day to come. And, well, by two P M., I text Ray Muscat and I claimed the situation, and he said he would see what he could do. He said today or tomorrow. Nobody came, and you know, after a couple downfalls of rain, it's still bad, it was still really bad. So, nobody came, I went around and asked people not to park in the street and everything. So, I told them, Wednesday you need to come out and, you know, look at it, how bad it is. He goes, I plan to do that today. So he came out and he took pictures. He took them back to the mayor, he said they'll be back out tomorrow. Thursday they came, I was out there really early, still trying to keep people out of the street, and, um, he, they went back maybe three times on my side, four or five ti- six maybe on the other side, it was, I could not believe the guy pulled away, he pulled away and it was still really bad. Now, there's hardly any water coming from those trucks, I don't know if they're supposed to vacuum, but they're sweeping, it was really windy that day, it's just blowing dust everywhere. So, apparently they, they didn't come back. So I took pictures myself, I called Monday and they said, um, I said I'd like them to come out tomorrow, I asked for the mayor, and the mayor never called me back. I asked for Conrad, he is on vacation, but I asked for him to call me before and he never called me back. So then, today I called again, and I asked for the mayor, again, he wasn't there, he was in a meeting, and again, nobody came. So.
Okay, thank you very much ma'am, so, eh, we, we do gotta keep in mind, in terms of the mayor, obviously they, they have a little bit more than just one or two meetings a day, so they, they do get pretty busy. But if you could do me a favor, if you could write your name, number, and address, hand it to me, and then I will hand it to the mayor and they'll make sure somebody will contact you from the, uh, D P W. I do know that as a direct, the Director is on vacation, but nevertheless, you should be called back, and you will be called back, so if you could write your name, number, and address, we'll make sure somebody contacts you.
Okay, but you know.
I do have the address, uh, uh, since, uh, Mr. Conrad's out of the office, I'll, I'll call tomorrow D P W. to see who's actually worked, taken over, uh, that section, so.
Okay.
And I know they've been by there a few times, but I, I wasn't aware that they didn't dump water.
They dumped some water, but it wasn't enough to do anything, and all it did, it's still a dust ball, it didn't do much. And I don't know, do those trucks vacuum? Cause I don't even think it can vacuum any of that, it's so padded down, but the dust is still flying.
Was it just mud, like debris?
It's dirt, it's like clay, it's thick, and now it's not so much in the center, but it's off to the sides, and it's a lot. So when cars pass, it's everywhere, our houses are being pelted with this dirt, just totally pelted.
One of the members of, uh, D P W. ma'am, is here, and he, he was pushing, yes, it does vacuum too, is that correct? Yes, it does.
Counselor Chair.
Didn't do much, and it's too packed, it really needs to be plowed, it needs to be plowed and shoveled up, honestly, it's so bad.
Okay, so the mayor will have somebody obviously look into that.
And if it's a, if they come out on a day that is Tuesday, our garbage day, there will be cars parked there. So, they need to put up no parking signs, and it's not just a couple houses, it's at least ten houses.
Counselor Chair, I did visit that site twice and spoke to the, some of the residents, you remember when I was out there? Ma'am?
Oh, Ray, I was gonna figure out who was talking to me, yes.
Yes, I, I was out there twice.
Yes.
I did go to the mayor's office and Rob, Mr. Conrad, Director Conrad happened to be there, and I, you know, I, I was visually upset, and they did come out that, the next day, and they went up and down the street multiple times, but it, for some reason, you know, it, it, it's so bad that, uh, our street sweepers probably aren't capable enough of doing that job, okay? Now, um, I, I don't know why they can't, but, um, you know, I, I don't have an answer for you, I don't work on those, or, so I, I really don't know what the capabilities of, are for that machine.
I'm not an expert either, but you would think that they would know what they're doing.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, I think this will be looked at, uh, here shortly, hopefully.
Let's, let's say that to the, to the administration, I mean, the mayor's saying he'll follow up on it, it's obviously in public forum, so.
Okay.
Counselor Chair.
Thank you.
But, well, I think it's, Mayor, do you have any other information from her, or you all?
I have the address.
Okay.
I'm right.
Councilman Wenzel, go ahead.
I was out there when they, uh, they were repairing the water main, and it was the second time, and they were showing me what happened, they, and they said this is a very, very rare occurrence, they showed me the boot that they repaired the water main previously a few days earlier, and the new break went like three feet away from it, and they said that hardly ever happens, and they were doing it again, and the day they did the second water main break, the dirt, the ground was so muddy, and they were digging all that up, and it, it was just a big muddy mess, and it started to rain. And normally, they said they clean up the streets, and you go by there, and the next day, it was, the dirt was packed down, it was like an inch thick of dirt packed down, and you can't sweep that up, you gotta go in with some kind of heavy machinery or shovel it by hand, but it, it ran all the way down like four or five houses, maybe more, and the, uh, because of the dirt was so wet, they couldn't backfill it properly, you know, where it was a mound of dirt, and some of that ran into the street. It was a perfect storm, uh, for that situation, but that's not the fault of the residents, it should be taken care of.
Okay, thank you Councilman. Come on up sir, you have three minutes, city, street. Cities.
Hello, my name's Hill Colter.
Name and street.
Okay. Hello, my name's Hill Colter, I live on Colonial Street.
Dearborn Heights.
Dearborn Heights, yes. Um, this has been going on for, I've inherited this about, uh, back in twenty-twenty, I came to City Council and complained about a tree that's parked on, or not parked, growing in the boulevard, and it's, uh, doing some severe damage to the bricks, the sidewalk and everything like that. And I'm trying to, I mean, I signed up for the cement program, I signed up for, I've talked to the mayor about it, I've talked to, um, the ordinance, and I, ordinance sent me over to the Building Department, and I'm just wondering if, what's going on with the cement work or the thing with, with the tree, I mean, I, I will fix the sidewalk, but that tree is just.
It's between the si- I, I just wanted to say, is it between the sidewalk, is it in the easement, between the sidewalk and the street?
Yes.
Okay, so the new ordinance that we have put together, sir, if it's an unhealthy tree, then you go through D P W., and then they look at it, and if they determine it's an unhealthy tree, then they put it through the process to eventually either cut it down, put up another tree, et cetera, et cetera. If it's a healthy tree, then you have a right as a resident, if you cho- so chose, to take the tree down at your expense. So do you, do you recognize it as a healthy or unhealthy?
I'm the only tree in the city that I've seen that has leg warmers, I mean, it's a big blind spot, there's branches from the, from the ground all the way up to the, the main, um.
Okay, so the person that determines whether the tree's healthy or not is not myself or you or specifically the mayor's office, it's specifically D P W., they have a, uh, a tree specialist that will come out and look at it and determine if it's healthy or unhealthy. So that's your first step in the process. So if you contact D P W., uh, anybody know the number offhand?
I think I got that note in this, in here.
Okay, and if you get nowhere with that, then either contact me, I'll connect you And if you get nowhere with that, then either contact me, I'll connect you with the mayor's office, just to make sure it's followed up on, or maybe you can contact the mayor's office.
Yeah, because, I mean, I live right down the street from, um, Highview School. And there's been branches falling down. I mean, I, during the last windy day, I was out cutting grass and I got hit by a dead branch come, falling out of that tree in my yard.
Right. It'd be unhealthy or a dangerous tree. Now, it could be trimming. Again, I'm not a tree expert, so that's where DPW comes in and that's what they will determine. And then, then from there, we'll go to the next step.
Because I had a tree cut down in front of the house and they told me that, why is that tree still there? Because it looks like it's outlived. It's, I mean, it's still green, but I mean, I don't have leaves on that tree till January.
Have you contacted DPW in regards to the tree?
Well, I've contacted DPW a few times, not in this year.
Okay. So, contact DPW. If you get nowhere, based on contacting DPW, then you ramp it up to the next level, which is, uh, DPW Director Conrad. If that gets you nowhere, then you contact the mayor's office. Or if you'd like, contact me. I'll make sure to connect you with the right partner.
Okay, plus it's a heck of a blind spot. Being that I live on the corner and I'm me pulling back and out of my driveway, I can't see a car from, from Colonial down to Robindale. And then especially if people come, coming down from Fenton, I mean.
Sure. No problem.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Also to addresses first concerned with a sidewalk, uh, program with concrete. We put that out for bid several times and nobody bid on this. As mentioned earlier in the meeting, um, a lot of these companies, they're swamped. You know, we're basically begging these companies to bid on some of the jobs in Dearborn Heights. So we have a stack of sidewalks that we have to do. Uh, I can't remember the number, but it's a huge stack that, uh, we can't get companies to do them. However, next year, uh, I would say, um, like early spring, um, we, we're, we're going to reach out to companies. Instead of putting it out, just put it on BitNet, you know, we're going to call companies to bid on these jobs. And, uh, we, we're getting more sidewalks, um, sign, uh, homeowners signing up for the sidewalk program. So we, we are working on it. However, this year, we could not get, I mean, even the company we talked about earlier, uh, for the streets. A lot of companies, they were, I mean, they had, it was because we did not commit, you know, because we don't, I mean, it's not like, there's a lot of, a lot of cities have more streets, you know, uh, and they have bigger budget than the city of Dearborn Heights. They're doing those jobs. So with us, they're like, okay, you know what? You're only doing 10,000, you know, square feet. There's this city is doing 30,000 square feet, so they're doing that, them before us. So we were on the waitlist with several companies. That's why we went out earlier for the other side of the, the, the city. So with the sidewalk program, nobody even wanted to do those because they're not in one location. So they have to travel throughout the whole city to do those sidewalks. But next year, we have a better plan with our city engineer has a process, uh, for next year. And I'm hoping early, by summer of next year, we're going to start with these sidewalks.
Well, another thing too is, is that, again, with Highview down the street, the, the sidewalk's about a good four or five inches from level. I mean, it's like two step. I mean, I've got four blocks that are raised and it's like, you step on one and click, 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 click. And it's like, I mean, I'm kind of wondering what the deal is. I mean, being that you answered the, I mean, next year is the.
But I, uh, I might allow, sir, I might allow Director D, these guys hand up, it looks like he wants to answer. You want to go ahead, Director? But if you give us, if you don't mind, a shorter answer, please.
Yes, um, very short. As the mayor indicated, we, we were, um, we were having issues trying to attract contractors, especially for, um, for smaller jobs, like a sidewalk, uh, flag. This is not only, the only issue, we, we also have the sanitary, um, uh, tie-in, um, if you, if you recall. Twice we bid that and we had. Want to approach it differently. In the winter time, we're going to do a job fair. What I'm contacting personally, smaller type contractors in other communities that do basically similar work. And we attract, we, we intend to do a job fair and then explain our needs in a way so we can. Cities have that. And these smaller jobs, because as the mayor indicated, contractors are going after where the larger, more lucrative contracts. You know, $200, uh, uh, concrete job on the sidewalk is really not as lucrative as one might think. So we intend to do it differently, hopefully by next spring, both of.
We got to get this.
Right, we'll be back in full course.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, sir. Anybody else here in person? Come on up, sir. Name, city, street.
Uh, hi, my name is Hussein Sob. Uh, I, uh, I'm from Dearborn Heights and I live on Backsider Street. I, I'm not here regarding, uh, any issues that I would personally like, uh, to be fixed. I was, I was actually wondering if, uh, if needed be. I am part of some, um, uh, clubs or, uh, I'm a member of a few teams at my university, University of Michigan, Dearborn. Uh, I was wondering if there's any programs or, um, while things you guys need assistance with. Of course, we don't have like a big company or anything, but you know, we wanted to see if you guys have any volunteer work for us because, uh, we wa- we want to try to give back to communities as well as.
Beautiful.
Do as much as we can, you know.
What's the name of your company? Are you an organization?
University of Michigan.
You're the organization?
So I, I'm part of two.
Yeah, the organization, you know, we're talking about Michigan.
Uh, my organization, I'm, I'm part of two. I'm part of the Lebanese Student Association.
Nice.
Yeah, uh, I, I, I know you founded the one at Wayne State, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and as well as Wishmakers.
Okay, great.
Yeah. So, uh, we just, we were just wondering if there's anything.
Okay. So if you could do it, first of all, I commend you for volunteering to help out in the community that you live in. That's beautiful.
Thank you.
Congratulations for picking a great university also. If you could give us your name and phone number, please, and pass it down to the mayors. And then, we got plenty of jobs for you.
Right.
Be careful what you wish for.
A big job that you could, if you volunteer, is our clerk would love to have volunteers for the election. Yeah. That's something you can call her and I'm sure she can hook you up.
For sure.
Okay?
Would, would you guys need me to, uh, write down my name and number?
Just your name and number, if you could give it to the clerks and then maybe she'll pass it on to the mayor or vice versa.
For sure. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much.
I like that.
I appreciate it.
Your leadership.
Go blue.
Go blue. Hang sequel green after.
Everybody else, uh, come on up, sir.
I waited all night for this.
The gentleman asks for an extra minute. Thank you.
My name's Ron Frenzy. Live on Fairwood Street in Dearborn Heights. And I'm here to talk about, uh, the pension fund. Because that's near and dear to the police, the fire, and the employees. About a year ago, the, the money managers came and said they made 30% increase in your money, which was really good. But now, how are they doing now? So, so on, on August, August 10th, in the Wall Street Journal, it says, "City and, state and city pension funds suffer worst year since 2009." They're doing really bad. And as you probably know, the stock market is plummeting, interest rates are going, are going to the moon. So, yesterday, the lead story in the Wall Street Journal, "Blue Chips Slide Into A Bear Market", which means the stocks have fallen like 20%. So, so what does that really mean? So, uh, last, uh, last year, when the money managers came, they made 30%. So to make it a little bit easier, imagine if the pension fund had $100 and it went up 30%. Now you're at $130. So, which is good. But, uh, losses are just devastating. The $130 now is down to 104. So in two years, the pension fund possibly made 4%. Cut that in half because of two years, you're 2%. Last, you know, 2% average. So, I want to just read one paragraph. "When pension funds returns fall short of targets, typically around 7% annualized, the cities and the states sponsors those pension funds, pay higher annual retirement contributions to make up the difference. Sometimes they have to raise taxes or cut services." That's really important. I mean, so, you know, you may be looking at higher taxes next year. So, this Friday is the end of the quarter. So sometime in October, you may want to bring back the money managers and just, this is just an average. Just to get an idea how well you're doing. If you, if you're, if they foresee additional payments into the fund. Just something to consider.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, anybody else in the audience? For full disclosure, are you speaking as a councilman or as a resident?
Um, my name is Tom Wentz. I'm a resident of a two-lane street in Dearborn Heights. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say, I got a call from a friend of mine who, uh, whose garbage day was last Friday. And he said that, uh, he had a couch to put out and, uh, the garbage trucks came out earlier than he thought and passed by his house. He said, but after contacting priority, they, they sent the, uh, root manager out to investigate. And he took the couch in his truck, put it in his truck and took it from him. So that's a, all the, all the bad things being said about different people. I thought that'd be a good thing to say about priority doing, and you know, they're on the road to recovery there. Now, um, the chili cook-off, I'll tell you what, those firefighters know how to throw a party. You know, it was a great time, great family event. I'm always pushing family events. I waited for everyone to get their say, especially the chief, about the cook-off before I said anything. But it's a, they, all kinds of things to do for kids, all kinds of things for adults. Now, um, I'm going back to the Warren Valley Car Show fiasco. Uh, just some questions for the mayor. Who okayed the use of the parking lot for overflow traffic? I say, ask who okayed for the, the park lot overflow, use of the park lot?
Like I said earlier, I said, they did a grand opening and they wanted to use the lot.
Who okayed the, okayed the use of the parking lot? Okay, you, okay, there's no one from the city okayed the use of the parking lot? Then probably, uh, were the police informed of this, uh, this event taking place? Excuse me, stop my time, please.
Yeah, he does. And I just want to clarify, because it's been mentioned many times, it was not a city-sponsored event, correct? Or approved event, I should say. City-sponsored or approved event, correct?
I was just trying to clarify, uh, the mayor mentioned, uh, that, uh, the, it was used for overflow parking just as the, uh, the school, Riverside School is used. And, um, I was just wondering if he okayed for that, that it'd be used as for overflow parking? Because it, once it was, once the event started, it was, it was in use. It wasn't for parking, it was for use for a car show. And, I mean, and the police weren't informed of this at all after a whole day, half the day. You know, this thing going on and no police presence in this situation, a crowd of over 1,000 people. No police, I mean, it's, I, it just, it just smells. I mean, if that's the case, then these people should have been ticketed for trespassing. No.
Where?
Yeah, but the, the people at food drives aren't doing donuts and going 87 miles an hour, which was a factual information, ticketed by, um, garden city police vehicle doing 87. So I doubt anybody doing a food drive would be doing 87. So I mean, that's, the police weren't informed, there was no okay to use the parking lot. Two other cities had to be called in to police departments, no trespassing issues. When the ribbon-cutting ceremony, the food trucks, we had two gentlemen sit here for months, trying to get a food truck permit. Months and months. And this event, people just come right in and park their trucks with no permits at all. I checked with the clerk, there was no permits requested, no permits issued. So what's going on with that, about these people on these food trucks? Are they going to be ticketed? Anybody?
If you, if you have the food truck, do you have the name of the food trucks that were there?
Got pictures of it. I'll get you the names.
Okay.
You seen them? They were there at the ribbon-cutting.
No, they, I, I was at the, the business. I, you know, they were not at the business.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience?
I'd like to speak as a resident real quick, if you don't mind.
All right.
Do I have to go up there or can I do it from you?
I, I think just so that nobody thinks you're speaking as a councilman, please come on up there.
I'm not going to pause it too, if we get interrupted, huh?
No, don't pause it.
Should I start it now? I'm just joking, man.
It was brought to my attention and I, I, I forgot.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Ray Muscat, Havelock Street, Dearborn Heights.
And as a citizen.
Citizen.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I, I spoke to various other people and I, as a councilman, I didn't say it, so I wanted to say this. We have to start looking at our ordinance department and police need to start looking at the truck stop that's on Van Born and go through that property. It's, it's a mess, a total mess. And I, and I'm sure there's rodents and oil and contamination all over the place. So, uh, I'm going to, uh, you know, ask the ordinance department if they could look at that truck stop on Van Born there, uh, where they keep all the, uh, trucks and RVs and all of that storage equipment there. I forgot to mention that, so I apologize.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, if nobody else in the audience, come on up. You have three minutes. City, street, and name, please.
Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Kidmore Street. So, Parkland Park.
Sorry, name, sorry.
Pamela Swirpo.
Thank you.
It, Parkland Park is running out to the Raiders Youth Football that you forgot about. So if you want to not renew, then the Raiders Football Youth Program that's had it for years would have to relocate. They use it through the fall. In October, when it gets dark, because there's not any lighting, they go to Crestwood. There's also multiple people that run out the permit. The park is used. It may not be used as much as any other park in the city, but it is used. The youth football program's huge there. They built the shed there, built the football field there. They, they sodded the field. There's multiple games that are done. So you're forgetting about the Pee-wee football league, so that's kind of important. You're going to have a lot of kids that aren't going to be able to play football if you do away with that park.
Counselor Chair, if I may.
Well, that's.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
Yeah, but I, I, I just want to comment on that, if you don't mind, please. I'm sure that the county is not going to close a, that park up and not let anybody use it.
But the city makes money off of the permit that's pulled.
But the, the city does not make enough money for us to maintain that, that, all the grass cutting that goes there. We are losing money, losing a tremendous amount of money. And the park is closed to the residents most of the time.
If you pull a permit, it won't be.
I understand what you're saying, but you can't go to the park whenever you want and park in there. The gates are always locked. And I've been there many times and the gates were locked.
So should they be open at a certain time, like the Heinz Park and then closed at a certain time?
It, to me, it's a park that people pay taxes to or. That park should be open 24/7, seven days a week.
Not 24/7 though.
24/7, it's a park.
I agree.
It's a park. And my tax dollars go to it. And I've said that before and I'm not going to argue the fact. It's we don't make enough money to support that park. That's what I said. Now, I understand the Raiders play there and I'm sure the county is not going to kick the Raiders out of there. Okay? But it, we, we, a- a- as, as council people, the fiduciary responsibility we have is to, to save us money. We're spending more money than what we generate. And, and we're short of people now to cut even the front lawn here at City Hall. Looks horrible, but yet we're cutting lawn at Parkland Park.
All right, councilman, I don't want to take away from the.
No, I'm not, but I just, you know, make it aware, uh, of that problem.
And then also years ago, when my son, Austin, went to Riverside, there was the issue with the parking on Warren Road. Cars were backing up as usual. So I went to actually Wing County and talked with them, I don't know if you remember this, years ago. I'm the one that got the gate installed between Riverside and Warren Valley Golf Course, so the parents could do the pickup in Warren Valley Golf Course. So, they're not there without permission. Permission was given years ago for Riverside to use that parking lot for parent pickup for the safety of the kids. So that is given with permission. It's not that Riverside's using it without permission, so that's false. Um, I did that years ago so that the gate was installed, I back in probably 2006 or '07, somewhere around there. Austin was back in Riverside, because it was more dangerous than it is now with the student pickup. So, I want to know, now that we've run, rented it and leased it, and I asked you guys before, is that still going to be available for Riverside to be able to use?
So according to the gentleman that has leased the property?
Right.
He did say it here even publicly, yes, he would allocate.
So I'm just confirming that.
He would allow that.
The mayor said that Riverside's using it without permission. So I wanted to confirm on record that it is being. So I wanted to confirm on record that it is being used with permission.
According to the gentleman, yes, he would allow cars to be
Yeah, because the gates installed, because it's, it's a dangerous intersection with those kids.
Correct.
It, it's bad and kids have been hit before there because of it.
I, he's, not only said it publicly, but I spoke with him via phone.
But I just wanted to clarify, because the mayor tonight said that the Riverside's using it without permission. So I wanted to clarify that the mayor made a mistake.
I, I don't want to dissect words that he said, but I do know, and I'm sure he's aware that yes, they are allowed to use it.
Okay, and then, you know, back to the, to the car thing, I'm not anything for fun ruining and things like that, but we have to have law, not lawlessness. And this, this event was planned, there were tents set up in Warren Valley, tents. There was food trucks, there was big, huge banners that were staked in the ground during the ribbon cutting ceremony. All throughout Warren Valley, it was like that. So there was a potential, obviously, because it was advertised on Facebook for massive crowds. Police departments should have at least been notified of it, you guys should have had a heads up, permits should have been pulled, things, safety wise, should have come into play. I've sent you guys the videos of kids laying on the car, driving around the parking lot. I've sent videos of the burnouts, I've sent videos of the donuts, kids around the roof of the buildings, smoking the hookah, watching it. It was literally like, what is going on? Nothing there to stop it. I mean, and that's, that's what makes the city look bad. If it was just a decent car show, like at the beginning of the video or everything was under control, once night comes, it's not like that. And if it was set up and if it was prepared and planned a little bit better, it would have been a great event, the city could have said, hey, this worked out well. But with improper planning and lawlessness of not getting the permits for the food truck, not having even a license to be able to, to use that property, the gates probably should be installed until it's under some sort of a control.
Okay.
Because, go ahead.
No, I just want to make sure you have your ample time.
Yeah.
You also, yeah, so I, I've received the videos and I've seen the videos and, and yes, and I was not aware of that myself personally. But I've received calls and what have you, starting from I think Sunday night on. And even the one resident, I said, I, I don't know what you're talking about, honestly, because I didn't know what this was all about. But obviously, needless to say, the city, nor the administration, nor the police department, nor the council members, obviously are okay with people doing burnouts and spinning and what have you. And with that being the case, I've had residents ask the community, why was that allowed, et cetera, et cetera. We don't need to put in a, 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 a new law or they don't need to get a permit to do burnouts or spinning or what have you. That's automatically not allowed and automatically against the law and automatically, in a video that I did see, I did see, if I'm not mistaken, a police car showing up. I don't know all the details of it, but needless to say, the police department, nor the administration are okay with
That's not what I'm saying, but what we need to do is take steps if
I agree.
if the, if he knew that the lot was being used as an overflow because people were showing up, maybe at that point, the mayor should have called and said, hey, Chief Hart, it looks like there might be more people than what was planned. We might need to have some backup here, we have police at festivals, we have to, you know, if, if it's St. Linus, they pay for their officers. If it's, if it's the city carnival, they pay, just like with, with Star International, they pulled the permit so that they can have the parade. So something needs to be set up, because it was definitely out of control. I mean, they're, they were up on the grass, they were up over the hills, it was, cars were laying on, there's probably 30 kids on one blue car driving around. If someone was hurt, the city would have been sued.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay. I'm sorry? I, that's not something I'm gonna comment, that's something
And, and I just want to add on a couple of things here, Mr. Swirpo, I can tell you that this administration, this council, the police department, nobody's okay with it. Just like you're alarmed, I promise you, this administration is alarmed, this police department, I'm alarmed.
So we've got to do a game plan, so it doesn't
But I, I want, I just want to make the narrative that we're not here, you know, saying that we're okay with this or the administration is okay with this or this police department's okay. Everybody's literally appalled by what happened. It's, it's disturbing, it was loud, it was dangerous. Then in the day, Dearborn Heights is not one city that's gonna allow something like this to happen.
But this crowd assembled during the ribbon cutting ceremony.
But I'm gonna tell you, I drove by up and down Warren, I drive up and down Warren every single day at least 10 times. I drove by at around 6 o'clock, 6:30, 7 o'clock, it was, it was not like that. I drove by at 8:30, I said, I, I
Okay, nothing
Well, I'm just gonna say, I drove by and I said, maybe Director Lawrence Sal's doing a great job at another event, I, I had no idea what was going on.
Okay. Okay, thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Anybody else from the audience? Come on up. City, street name.
Dropkowski Columbia Street.
Dearborn Heights.
Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan, Harpitt, Michigan. Mr. Bedun, you are absolutely wrong, because I picked up a friend a few minutes after 5:30 on Saturday to go to a class reunion. I text Mr. Muscat asking him what was going on at the Warren Valley Golf Course, because you could not flee inside that parking lot. Okay, so that parking lot was full.
At 5:30?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm timing it probably off, because when I drove by, it wasn't
I'll tell you, I'll show you the text message.
Yeah, I believe you, I venture, I know you're good for it.
Okay, so, don't make stuff up.
Okay. So just to, to, to answer it, at least as far as a council body, you know what? Maybe something's learned from this and, and hopefully something better will happen. But it's, it's good to have events in the city, but maybe a little better planning, and you know what? It's okay, sometimes people drop the ball, if the ball was dropped, we learn from it and we move on.
This wasn't dropped on the city's part.
I, I, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, I'm hearing maybe some things that weren't done as properly as maybe some people would like. We learn from it, we move on, it's good to have events in the city.
It is good to have events in the city, you know, but
No, absolutely not, but you know what? But, okay, but nothing, nothing from the audience, to be fair. All I'm saying is, look, this was not perfect, I'm not happy with it. But it happened, it's done, we're gonna learn from it and we're gonna help
Let's move forward.
Yeah, we're gonna move forward, but we're gonna put in better practices for the future.
Council chair, can I just add on one last thing? And maybe the police chief, you know, that, one of the, I don't know, forget who said it, but there are videos out there and maybe if we can see the videos, maybe there's an investigation going on, I'm sure you probably can't speak upon it, but if there's any way we can find out that those that were, you know, causing this ruckus in the city and this, you know, this nuisance, I'd love for them to be held accountable, also the, the food trucks. And, and the food trucks, you know, I don't know who gave them permission, but if they did it without it, then they should also be held accountable.
Also, while I'm up here, excuse me, chief. Got all night. Parkland Park needs to be promoted. You know, we need more promotion, we need promotion for the golf course too. We can make money on this, and Mr. Muscat, I know you say that the city can't make money on the golf course, bull. We can make, we can make that.
I didn't say that, I just said we're not making money.
Well, we need to make money. We need to promote it, we need to start promoting it now, before the season starts. All right, thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Council chair. Okay, for council members, we all agreed during the study session that we're gonna have a lot of back and forth, so you guys wanted this, so let's keep it to the minimum, but go ahead, sir.
It's all right.
Okay, come on up, police chief.
So you have a question on the table regarding if there's any videos and what we can do about follow-up? Absolutely, we're gonna follow up on them. I was unaware of this event until I woke up on Sunday morning to an email explaining what the observations were. I immediately forwarded to the chief of staff to try to figure out whether this was city sanctioned or not. And then early on Monday morning, had a conversation with the mayor that as this golf course and banquet center become more and more successful, that we need to have a conversation with the concessionaire and others to put a plan in place. Because the first phone call that we got, and I'm hearing a lot of people saw signs of things happening, but the first phone call we get from the police department is the gentleman who's hosting the event, asking for assistance. So we have, this is the information conversations from the sergeant that I had last night, around 8:30, when I saw him that was on scene. That's the information that I have, that was given to me, is that he is the person that called. So when we see things in the community that seem to be abnormal or starting to bubble up, we would appreciate a phone call to the dispatch center so we can try to get ahead of it as, as quickly as possible. And I know there's been some folks that have sent in communications regarding, you know, why were we allowing someone to do burnouts and so on? I've been outnumbered a lot of times in my career and at some point it becomes hundreds and hundreds of people and a handful of police officers. And what we're trying to do is clear out the gathering, right? It becomes a safety issue when we have so many people that are on site. And there are some very good takeaways from the audience tonight, that as we become more successful and we have more events and we have more businesses opening up in the community, is we have to have those conversations with our new business owners and put processes in place to alleviate something like this from happening. No, it's not okay, right? And we will look into it, for sure.
And I only made that recommendation, chief, I remember the city of Dearborn, there was a video that came out with the police chief where there was a burnout that happened, somebody recorded it, and then he came back out with a video and said, thank you for sharing that video. Because of this video, we were able to catch the person that was doing it, the car was impounded, the person was ticketed. And so, you know, accountability was done there.
It's been a busy couple of days, but I can't remember anyone sending me videos, I know I have at least one.
At least one in Dearborn.
Well, I'm seeing, there was, there was a video that just came out recently, and I, I have and I'll share it with you, chief.
Yeah, would love to look at them, absolutely.
I just received it, or else I would have shared it to you earlier on.
Yeah.
Thank you, chief, appreciate it. Anybody else in the audience? Anybody? I'm sorry, ma'am, just, please.
If you share them with me, I'll be more than willing to share them with the police chief.
Anybody else in the audience? Hearing none, let's go to Zoom, anybody on Zoom? I see Hassan Jamal, you'll be speaking, because this is public comments only, please. So if the director commented, it should have been during the directors, but if you want to speak as a citizen, no problem, we'll give you three minutes, go ahead.
Again, good afternoon. You know, what
I'm sorry, name, name, I'm sorry, I need name, city, street, and if you're speaking as a director, which I know you're not in this case, you're speaking as a citizen, but I just want to
I am, I am speaking, I'm not speaking, I am reading something and I'm done. So I am reading this as part of bidding, because what you talked today affecting me a lot, because I do a lot of bidding, a lot of contracts. So I'm gonna just read and I'm gonna let you look at it, section 94, chapter 4, chapter 9.
Okay, I'm sorry, director, I, I, I have to be fair, this is the public comments section. That, if, if you feel some
I will send this
As an email to everyone, maybe?
An email to everyone, if, if that's the case, because this is not a concern of me as a resident as much as a city official.
Sure, no, no, I, I, I commend that, but I'm trying to keep them separated, you know, the parts for the public comments, it's just public comments and the parts for the announcements is just announcements, so I do appreciate it. If you could email us, to all of us, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, I could just print this while we are arguing about it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, director. Okay, nobody else in the audience, any, madam clerk, anybody on Zoom? Nobody else? Okay. Moved to adjourn by Councilman Bedun.
Support second.
Seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any comments on that? Hearing none? Vote, oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna vote, we always forget to vote on this. You always Okay, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion passed.